Welcome to the Brevard County Commission meeting on this, the 66th day of the year, March 7th, 2017, which means we only have 299 days left until the ball comes down. Just thought you'd like to know that. And I think everyone, particularly the women in our audience, here and at home, on camera, will find our useless information today very interesting because on this day in history, back in 1908, Cincinnati Mayor Mark Bright stood before the City Council and announced, and I quote, "Women were not physically fit to operate automobiles," unquote. Told you. So I wonder what he would think of race driver Danica Patrick or our very own, Melbourne's very own, Elaine Larson from Larson Motorsports. He would probably choke on his breakfast or something. So, anyway, that's your useless information for this evening. So now we'll have our invocation.
Pastor Tom Finlison. And he's from the Brevard Worship Center.
Stand, please.
First of all, thank you guys for letting us do this and to offer the prayer up. I know it's kind of a dying tradition across our nation, but the people, your constituents, it's important to them that we factor in God and His Word into the business that you're doing. I just want to say thank you and we appreciate it. Would you bow your heads with me? Forward a prayer. Dear loving and gracious Father, Your Word says to enter into Your gates with thanksgiving and into Your courts with praise. So we just want to say thank You on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank You for Your abundant blessings. Thank You for life itself. Thank You for the strength to fulfill our assignments and the callings that You've placed on our life. Thank You for our God-given inalienable rights that come from You and not from our government. I ask You to bless the county commissioners present here today. Bless Commissioner Kurt Smith as he chairs the proceedings tonight. Bless the vice chair, Commissioner Rita Pritchett. Bless Commissioner Jim Barfield, Commissioner Jim Tobia, Commissioner Christine Azanardi. You promised us in Your Word that You would grant us wisdom to make decisions if we would ask. So we're asking You for wisdom and insight to conduct the business that is set before Brevard County Board of County Commissioners tonight. We ask for the ability to work together in harmony even when there's honest disagreement. We pray that for tonight's agenda, please give us the affirmation that would please You and bring glory to You and what would benefit the citizens of Brevard County. We ask these things in the name of Your Son, Jesus. Amen. Thank you.
Plays the allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, you might be interested to know that you had mentioned the fact that it's a disappearing event before. We were sued by an atheist group and along with 20 other counties and municipalities in central Florida, we were the only ones that stood up to the challenge. That's disheartening.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that so much. Thank you.
Okay, moving into the business at hand, we have some minutes for approval, February 2nd, 2017. Do I have a motion to approve those?
So move.
Commissioner Barfield makes the motion to approve.
Second. Second.
Second by Commissioner Azanardi. Anyone wish to vote no? That passes 5-0. Now we'll move into resolutions. We have the first resolution from District 1.
Yes, sir. It's for Women's History Month. Is Rosemary Gill here? If you would come up forward. You are beautiful.
Yes, she is.
This is a resolution of Brevard County Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, in recognition of Women's History Month 2017, honoring trailblazing women in labor and business. Whereas the Brevard County Commission acknowledges the National Women's History Month theme for 2017, honoring trailblazing women in labor and business, honoring women who have successfully challenged the role of women in both business and the paid labor force. Women have always worked, but often their work has been undervalued, underpaid, and unpaid. Whereas Brevard County Commission acknowledges that women from diverse backgrounds have made their mark in different fields and successfully challenged the social and legal structures that have historically kept women's labor underappreciated and underpaid. And whereas Brevard County Commission acknowledges that women face startling inequalities in the workplace such as lower wages, poor working conditions, and limited opportunities. Women fought to make the workplace a little less hostile environment and they succeeded in expanding women's participation in commerce. And whereas the Brevard County Commission acknowledges that women, as labor and business leaders and innovators, defied the social mores of their times by demonstrating women's ability to create organizations and establish their own business that paved the way for better working conditions and wages for themselves and other women. And whereas the Brevard County Commission recognizes that team diversity will hold its third annual Women's History Month event on March 16th, 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This event will include keynote speaker, a multicultural specialist, Rosemary McGill, who at the age of 15 became a freedom rider, putting her life at risk to draw attention to the inequalities in Florida. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the month of March 2017 as Women's History Month and urges the citizens of Brevard County to be mindful of the contributions of women and all its citizens throughout the year. Done, ordered, adopted, this regular session on the 7th day of March 2017. Ms. Rosemary, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
I'm a little bit overwhelmed. I didn't know you had that history. Of course I did at age 15.
Ma'am, do you want to stand at the microphone so we can hear you?
I did at the age of 15 begin the Freedom March throughout Brevard County and the state of Florida. At age 17, I did walk with Dr. Martin Luther King in the city of St. Augustine. And of course, I had the opportunity in 2013 to be interviewed by Brooke Shields and Willie Geis on The Today Show. And to come before my commissioners and be recognized in this way is very overwhelming. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. You need to make a motion.
Do I make the motion?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations. Now you could have.
Rosemary, do you want to bring your doctor, Dr. Green, over?
I'm really attending. They also AARP sponsored us in 2013 to be featured in their magazine. I've worked with my grandchildren and my daughter, my daughter. She used to work with the county's Whitby notes. And of course, Kimberly has just graduated as an actuarialist at Florida Indian University.
Garrett Lamp and Tom Nider. Would you come forward, please? Welcome, gentlemen. Let me read this. Whereas the St. Baldry's Foundation is a volunteer-driven charity committed to funding the most promising research to find cures for childhood cancers and to give survivors long and healthy lives. Whereas childhood cancer is a serious issue and is the number one disease killer of children in the United States and Canada. And whereas St. Baldry's funds are granted to some of the most brilliant childhood cancer research experts in the world, which enable hundreds of local institutions to participate in finding a cure. And whereas, since the foundation's first grants as an independent charity in 2005, it has funded more than $200 million in childhood cancer research. And $1.4 million of that was contributed by the Space Coast. Whereas since March of 2011, when the Florida Space Coast first started shaving heads with the St. Baldry's Foundation, more than 1,500 heads have been shaved in efforts to show support for children with cancer. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners declares March 16th, 2017, St. Baldry's Foundation Day in Brevard County, urging the community to come out and make a difference by shaving heads to conquer childhood cancers. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of March 2017. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Would you like to tell us a little bit about St. Baldry's?
Well, first, thank you so much for recognizing this incredible foundation. We're incredibly thankful for the Board of County Commissioners, for your support. And as a local representative of the foundation, but also a resident of Brevard County, I want you to know what an incredible group of employees you have. Sheriff Wayne Ivy, Fire Chief Mark Scholmeyer, together as a public safety organization, have been just a tremendous supporter of the foundation. Those two organizations together prior to this year have raised over $250,000. This year, they have already raised, the Fire Department is at 14,237. The Sheriff's Department is at $7,300. So they are continuing, and I'm sure that they will hit $300,000 together very shortly. This past week, we locally have hit the $1.5 million in just under seven years for local children that need research for their cancer research. And why that's special is because it puts us on the map with LA, Chicago, Philadelphia, New York City, and other big cities across the country. So thank you very, very much. We appreciate your support and like the hat and tie. So I understand you'll be talking about that maybe a little bit later too, right? Very good.
Yeah, it's good. Very good.
For any of you that think the hat was just a prop, I'm getting ready to wear regularly because I volunteer to get my hair cut shaved too. Okay, moving on to one C.
West Shore Junior and Senior Soccer Team. Guys, come on up. It's a large group of handsome young men.
Yes.
Whereas West Shore Junior/Senior High School Soccer Team won its second Class II-A state title in six seasons on February 16th, 2017, when it beat Berkeley Prep from Tampa 1-0 in the championship game held at Speck Martin Stadium in Deland. And whereas Coach Bob Robideau and his team fought a tough game offensively, registering six shots on goal, including the winning goal from Amuga Chukunene.
Yes.
Whereas the Wildcats played outstanding defense in their five playoff games, outscoring their opponents 10-1 and holding Berkeley Prep to zero shots on goal in the championship game. And whereas with this win, the West Shore Junior/Senior High School Boys Soccer Team finished the season with a record 20 wins and three losses and no ties, scoring 87 goals in the 23 games. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and commend West Shore Junior/Senior High School Boys Soccer Team as the 2017 Class II-A Florida State Soccer Champs. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of March 2017. Congratulations, guys. I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations, guys.
Last 21 wins for us.
Did you want to say a few words about these boys?
You would say something.
You're still trying to figure out how I said his name correctly, correct?
Oh, Muga? Yeah, yeah. No one got it right all year.
That's because I work with somebody with the same last name. So I asked her because I didn't want to get it wrong because I know you probably get it a lot. So, anyway, go ahead.
No, seriously, I would just like to thank everyone here for taking the time to recognize these boys. The season was more than five months long and you're dealing with one of the best academic schools in the state of Florida. So not only with their school workload, the dedication and the hard work that they put in to get to where we got. One thing that I'd like to say also is our state run, our last six games were against prep schools that they recruit for soccer. And we have a school that's literally a lottery school and we don't know who we're going to get every year. So I just, again, I'd like to say thank you to everyone for recognizing the accomplishment these boys have done. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Outstanding.
Are we supposed to try and get a picture?
Yes.
They sure have kids big these days.
I know.
And last but certainly not least, can we have Dr. Phil Simpson, Provost for the Titusville campus at Eastern Florida? Is your team present?
Yes, they are.
Don't be shy. You guys should be very proud. Resolution, whereas the 2017 All Florida Academic Team consists of 127 students chosen from over 800,000 students enrolled in the 28-member Florida college system, which includes Eastern Florida State College. And whereas a record number of eight Eastern Florida State College students, two from each of the campuses, have been selected to the 2017 All Florida Academic Team for their outstanding scholarship and work in the community. And whereas the students were nominated by their colleges and selected based on their high academic achievement in the classroom, leadership on campus, and service to the community. Whereas the eight Eastern Florida State College students who were selected to the 2017 All Florida Academic Team are Jessica Larios and Noel Villanueva from the Titusville campus, Jonathan Howell and Victoria Kitt from the Cocoa campus, Zinnay Brown and Leah Walker from the Melbourne campus, and Laura Carroll and Anna Perez from the Palm Bay campus. And whereas the members of the 2017 All Florida Academic Team will be formally recognized during the April 7th award ceremony at Florida State University in Tallahassee. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and commend the eight Eastern Florida State College students selected to the 2017 All Florida Academic Team. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of March 2017. Congratulations. I'll make a motion for this resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Azanardi. We have a second. Second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to say, vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Do you want to say anything, Dr. Provost, about the team? Brag on them a little bit?
Absolutely. Well, congratulations, team. We very much appreciate it at Eastern Florida State College on behalf of Dr. James Ritchie and the Board of Trustees and the entire college staff and faculty. We're all very proud of you. And it's definitely a group effort. Phi Theta Kappa has chapters on each campus. So with that in mind, I would also like to recognize my colleagues, Dr. Wayne Stein, Palm Bay Provost, and Mr. Michael Kador, Palm Bay Associate Provost. And without their support and the support of the chapter advisors and the support of the faculty, these students would not be here with you tonight. But I want to say that the main reason they're here is because of their efforts. And I've never seen a team like this before. And I've been doing Phi Theta Kappa as both a chapter advisor and a campus administrator for many years. And this is the strongest team that we've assembled. And we're all very proud of them. So thank you very much. And representing Tallahassee. Thank you.
You guys want to turn around right here?
The front looks much better.
Back right in.
You want to get up?
I've got a wide angle.
A what?
Wide.
You all ready?
They're back up again.
There you go.
Y'all ready?
You're way on the side.
Okay.
Couple more. Make sure nobody's blocking. Ready?
One more.
One more.
There's always one more. No fear.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's my pleasure to recognize the Indian River Colony Club. Skip.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith and commissioners. We're happy to be here tonight and we brought the old folks in tonight. But to speak for us tonight is Colonel Bill Corbett, U.S. Air Force retired.
Let me read this resolution and I'd love to hear from you. Whereas the Indian River Colony Club, IRCC, was the first residential community to be built in the vast land area owned by the Duda family. And whereas the developers of IRCC had the goal of creating a community where military officers and their families could afford to enjoy the rest of their days in comfort and relaxation. And whereas IRCC now consists of a sizable community of military officers and others who have served in many of our nation's wars and reflect the highest possible standards of patriotism and dedication to country. And whereas the residents of IRCC are a group strong in community spirit and are volunteers that can be found in Brevard hospitals, veterans facilities, soup kitchens, and wherever support is needed to help their neighbors. And whereas IRCC maintains and supports its own officially established foundation that provides essential financial and educational assistance to those who need a helping hand. And whereas IRCC has grown over the years to become a community of 771 homes and over 1,300 outstanding citizens who in every way contribute to the viability of Brevard County. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize the 31st anniversary of the Indian River Colony Club and proclaim February 4th, 2017, as IRCC Day in Brevard County and offers their congratulations and sincere appreciation for the outstanding asset you, the members of IRCC, have brought to Brevard County. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of March 2017. I so move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone wish to vote no? Passes 5-0. Would you like to tell us a little bit about St. Baldry's?
Well, first, thank you so much for recognizing this incredible foundation. We're incredibly thankful for the Board of County Commissioners, for your support. And as a local representative of the foundation, but also a resident of Brevard County, I want you to know what an incredible group of employees you have. Sheriff Wayne Ivy, Fire Chief Mark Scholmeyer, together as a public safety organization, have been just a tremendous supporter of the foundation. Those two organizations together prior to this year have raised over $250,000. This year, they have already raised, the Fire Department is at 14,237. The Sheriff's Department is at $7,300. So they are continuing, and I'm sure that they will hit $300,000 together very shortly. This past week, we locally have hit the $1.5 million in just under seven years for local children that need research for their cancer research. And why that's special is because it puts us on the map with LA, Chicago, Philadelphia, New York City, and other big cities across the country. So thank you very, very much. We appreciate your support and like the hat and tie. So I understand you'll be talking about that maybe a little bit later too, right? Very good.
Yeah, it's good. Very good.
For any of you that think the hat was just a prop, I'm getting ready to wear regularly because I volunteer to get my hair cut shaved too. Okay, moving on to one C.
West Shore Junior and Senior Soccer Team. Guys, come on up. Stand right there is fine. It's a large group of handsome young men.
Yes.
Wow. Whereas West Shore Junior/Senior High School Soccer Team won its second Class II-A state title in six seasons on February 16th, 2017, when it beat Berkeley Prep from Tampa 1-0 in the championship game held at Speck Martin Stadium in Deland. And whereas Coach Bob Robideau and his team fought a tough game offensively, registering six shots on goal, including the winning goal from Amuga Chukunene.
Yes.
Whereas the Wildcats played outstanding defense in their five playoff games, outscoring their opponents 10-1 and holding Berkeley Prep to zero shots on goal in the championship game. And whereas with this win, the West Shore Junior/Senior High School Boys Soccer Team finished the season with a record 20 wins and three losses and no ties, scoring 87 goals in the 23 games. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and commend West Shore Junior/Senior High School Boys Soccer Team as the 2017 Class II-A Florida State Soccer Champs. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 7th day of March 2017. Congratulations, guys. I'll make a motion to approve this resolution.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Anyone wish to say, vote no? Passes 5-0. Congratulations.
Do you want to say anything, Dr. Provost, about the team? Brag on them a little bit?
Absolutely. Well, congratulations, team. We very much appreciate it at Eastern Florida State College on behalf of Dr. James Ritchie
Okay, now we'll move into the consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like to pull? I would like to pull 2A4. If we have no others. Can I have a motion to accept the remaining consent agenda?
You may to approve.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve the consent agenda as processed except for 2A4. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass is 5-0. Okay, I would like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Denninghoff.
Commissioner's item 2A4 is a request of the Board to approve a modification to the agreement between the Florida Department of Transportation in Brevard County regarding the Pioneta overpass. This agreement provides state funding for the entirety of the project to construct that overpass over the railroad just west of US-1. The agreement previously had established a $3.1 million limit on the amount of money that could be spent for right-of-way acquisition or property rights acquisition associated with the project. In the early stages of the project, we had coordinated with the Florida East Coast Railway regarding what would have to be done to get over the railroad. In fact, they had entered into an agreement with the county to build this, and DOT provided the funds to get it built. And it was really all what they requested. That's a polite way of putting it, from FEC, for the county to build the Pioneta over the tracks. The right-of-way that was to be acquired was estimated based on the known needs for the project and was set at that $3.1 million based on appraisals that we were aware of. We'd received comments from FEC on multiple occasions. At no time did they mention that we were going to have to acquire any rights across the tracks. And in late January, they sent us an email telling us that we needed to have an aerial easement across their tracks to build the overpass that they wanted us to build. And at any rate, and they told us that they were expecting a $300,000 payment to compensate them for that easement. We are in the process currently of acquiring an appraisal for the easement that would comply with state statute regarding how we acquire property rights, as well as county policy. We don't have that yet, but we did contact DOT, who agreed to increase the amount for the right-of-way acquisition by that $300,000 in anticipation that we would eventually reach an agreement with FEC for that aerial easement. At any rate, without the modification to the DOT agreement, we would not have any funds to reimburse us for the acquisition of that easement. So that's what brings this item to us. At a future date, we would be bringing some sort of a contract or an exchange agreement to be ratified by the Board to support the acquisition of the easement. I don't know how much it'll cost. I don't know what it's going to be. I don't know what the appraisals are. I will tell you that this was quite a surprise to us. My staff says that they were glad they were not around when I read the email, and they're right. They were glad they weren't around. I was glad they weren't around, too.
Any comments from the Board or any questions? Commissioner Tobias, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Denninghoff, for that explanation. My question is, it looks like we have $26 million and change, and the easement portion went up $300,000, but $300,000 came off of the construction portion of that. My understanding is the county is responsible for any overages. So my question is, not that $300,000 of fluff was taken out of the construction, but that's $300,000 less. Are you concerned that re-appropriating these funds for the easement will put the county in jeopardy for being on the hook for overages at a greater likelihood than what there was prior to this agreement, or potential agreement?
If I understand your question correctly, I think your premise is correct, and that is a concern that I have evaluated and my staff has evaluated and our consultant has evaluated. Currently, our cost estimate for the construction is well below the remaining balance, and so we believe that the risk of us being on the hook for more funds is relatively low. I would advise, however, and I have to do this unfortunately, we have been seeing quite an escalation in construction costs across the board, in some cases almost double. But for projects of this size, we aren't seeing double, but we are seeing escalations. We think we're still safe in this case. And at the bottom, I think of the agenda report, we believe we've got sufficient funds remaining to take care of the remainder of the costs associated with the project. But we'll know a lot more when we see the bids. I will tell you that we were ready to go to bid for this project. We were acquiring the final permit, we thought, from FEC. And the one thing I would say about the communication from FEC is that, in addition to what I've already said, is that they drew a very direct linkage between the Pioneta overpass and the Pine Street overpass with All Aboard Florida.
Mr. Denninghoff, I have a question for you. How many other, or do we have any other, overpasses or flyovers in Brevard County?
I believe there's five in the county currently. One is kind of going from north to south. We've got US-1 going over the railroad tracks in Titusville. We've got 405 going over both the US-1 and the railroad tracks for the Nassau Causeway. The Beach Line goes over US-1 and the railroad tracks in North Cocoa. And then the next one would be, whenever it gets built, would be the Pioneta overpass. Then there's Melbourne Avenue in Melbourne, which most people don't really think of as a grade-separated crossing of the railroad, but it is. It goes under the railroad at that location. And of course, that's just a two-lane road and very low volume. And then the other one is Conlon Boulevard in South Melbourne, Melbourne, Palm Bay area. Those are the only ones that we have.
Were we required to pay any aerial easements for any of those?
Not that I'm aware of.
So it does raise the questions, does it not, that why are we being singled out for aerial overpass in this situation? It's just curious to me.
We've questioned and asked, and we've been unable to find independent evidence or corroboration about aerial easements such as this at other locations thus far. We haven't done an exhaustive search by any means, but we've checked with DOT. They're unaware of a similar situation. Our consultant, who's done multiple overpasses over railroads at other locations, is the first time they've seen something like this. I would point out that the All Aboard Florida situation over Pine Street was one that All Aboard Florida wanted an aerial easement. It wasn't us that insisted that they get an aerial easement. This situation is a little bit different.
So I take it that this isn't the last time we're going to hear about this aerial easement?
I can think of at least two occasions where we're going to hear about it again. One is whenever we are in the process of negotiating a modification to the All Aboard Florida easement. We hope to bring that to the Board on the 21st of this month. If all goes well, as we prepare that item, we will. And then whenever we complete our work with FEC and DOT for the Pioneta, then we'll hear about it, at least on those two separate occasions. We will not be ready on the 21st for the Pioneta. There's way too far to go to get it done in that short a time.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments from the Board? Commissioner Barfield, you have the floor.
Yes, Mr. Denninghoff, it does seem kind of interesting. Even though these are two separate companies, and that's what we've been told all along, that they're separate companies. But I think we need to remember just what you said, that All Aboard Florida asked for the Pine Street bridge. But they needed a lot more there for them to be successful. They have to have it. And so I think we just need to remember that. We really don't have to have it at Pioneta. So I think that All Aboard Florida and FEC probably need to understand that. So I would say that we make sure they understand that.
I've reminded both of their staffs about that situation already, and I'm not tired of reminding them. I'll keep reminding them, so.
And I will as well. Okay, so do we have a motion to accept this resolution?
Make a motion to accept it.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to accept. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Znardi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Vote is 4-1. The nay vote is Commissioner Barfield. Okay, we'll move into public comments. I see none. He doesn't have one. Okay, no public comment. Do we have a card? Mr. Toby, come forward. I don't see a card. There it is. He's on number seven. That's why. Mr. Toby, I have you down here for public comment at the end of the meeting. Do you wish to speak now? You're here, might as well.
Opportunity exists. No telling how things go.
Grab it.
And thank you. Charles Toby, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I want to thank your staff for listening to me and my grievances today, and that I think it would be beneficial if I could ventilate at your office to one of your administrators or staff instead of displaying it here on public.
Door's always open.
And thank you for all your services in our county and all the changes that have been helping, and that's why I'm concerned about more personal instead of county issues, because you're doing a better job. Thank you. Mr. Whitten, I have a personal request. Congratulations and good luck wherever, and God bless you. Looking for some of your associates or some of your companions to supply a Thompson Chain Reference Study Bible for me. Could be used or not. Mine's kind of worn out and page is missing, but I appreciate that. And I do have more seeds for you. Valentine, I have those chocolates as well, but they might be a little bit melted. I do have my family's history of how they were serviced in Brevard in 1837, some earlier dates as well. Thank you again. My vet, my homeless vet that has been suffering with me on the streets as well, he finally got the Lotto number, and he's in his apartment doing well, and thank you. And I wanted to also thank Chief MEMS of the Melbourne Police Department for doing a better job in our community, and I wouldn't mind him being a sheriff of Brevard. And that goes back to my family history. My great-granddad, he was Sheriff Hayes of Brevard County. And we have more. As far as the lagoon, I'm back to work and doing my stuff, and I'm getting my video and asserting myself diligently on my legal situation, since no one's going to help me. I have to learn. And that's about it, besides why do anything? You know, I can't do anything I want to do because I have all these people wanting to tell me what to do, how to do it. This is a, why? Why fix my house? Why do anything if I have people destroying it? And then, no matter what law enforcement, they turn it around on me because I'm acting irrational while people destroy my property. It's been a continual thing, and I see that, and I'll wrap it up. And I appreciate your patience with me, and as you can't tell, I am getting better all the way around. It's a balance of things. You have to have a balance, and I'll quit.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Martin?
Just give us the whole stack. We'll pass them out. Good evening. Melissa Martin, Cocoa. My concerns about liquid natural gas operations stem from three issues. One, that only the fire rescue units in Titusville were being trained on this incidence of massive gas leaks or explosions. Two, that the LNG plant explosion in Washington a few years ago not only caused injuries, but there was an evacuation of residents within a two-mile radius. From the planned LNG plant site here, the radius includes a big chunk of Port St. John residents. I was just wondering, have they been notified or otherwise consented to this activity? Three, I heard a respected government employee say something troubling regarding the fact that daily freight of LNG would substantially increase rail traffic and noise pollution and risk throughout the county. And I quote, "If you live anywhere near the railroad, now would be a good time to sell." I heard that on Friday, February 3rd, and I came before you the following Tuesday, a month ago. I'm not aware of any movement for official inquiry beyond my own efforts, which is why I thought maybe I needed a citizen's request to ask the Board to direct staff to find out. So in addition to what was laid out in the request I just handed you, one, I'm looking for unbiased sources and studies that show this experimental form of transporting LNG by train is sufficiently safe. I understand the only other time it's been done was in Alaska under different circumstances. Two, Martin County's fire rescue estimated the zone of impact for leaking 10,000-gallon LNG tank to be about a half-mile. Will residents and businesses within a half-mile of the train tracks be notified and informed of what to do should a leak occur near them? Should they close their windows, evacuate, or not light up a cigarette? Three, in the likely event of a collision at the intersections, will LNG trains be going at slow enough speeds in populated areas that the impact will not cause the LNG tanks to leak or explode? Four, are the cruise ships at a safe distance from the LNG export terminals at the port? Five, since methane is colorless and odorless, will there be sufficient monitoring and notification systems throughout LNG operations from the pipelines coming in from Orlando to the plant and all transport-export operations every single day? Since we live in the lightning capital of the nation, and indirect lightning strikes already cause natural gas leaks in pipes, has that been considered or properly accounted for? Six, should we find that the residents and businesses of Brevard don't have a voice or choice in the matter, can we at least ensure, please, that no LNG operations will occur unless and until all local crisis response... unless and until all local crisis response units throughout the county are properly budgeted, trained, and equipped to deal with this new threat? I trust that such costs will not be borne on the taxpayers or FPL customers. How the Board decides to act on this information sends a message. If you direct staff to find out and make ready, it shows that you care for us, the people, despite what political constraints you may or may not be under, and for that, we will be grateful. If you choose to continue to let it ride, that will likely send a message, too. Thank you for your time and consideration. Do I have any questions about this issue? I hope you understand that I am not trying to stir any pots, or otherwise create controversy. This is really a compelled action, based on information that came to me, that I realized needed to be answered. So, I hope and trust that with next week's meeting that I have with the county manager, and any meetings I am able to hold with whatever commissioners, that these answers will be... Excuse me, these questions will be answered. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Commissioners, this is a vacating petition for easements on a lot, single-family lot on Merritt Island, in the Catalina Isle subdivision. We don't have any facilities located within that easement, and we've received no objections from any of the sources that we typically contact, or the public.
Pleasure, the Board.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Isnardi. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0. 4B.
Mr. Chairman, 4B is a TFR public hearing, which is required by the IRS Code to qualify revenue bonds for tax-free status, and these relate to the Winchester Electronics DIA revenue bond refunding. I think you need to ask for any comments from the public, if there are any, and if not, I think there's somebody here from the company. I'm not sure where they are, but I think they're... If you need them.
Comments from the public on this issue? I have no cards.
You're good to go.
So, can I have a motion to approve?
I'd like to approve.
4B. Commissioner Pritchett, so moves. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Isnardi. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Passes 5-0. Okay, 5A.
Yes, 5A. This is the agenda request to the Board regarding the selection committee recommendation for the recruiting firm, for the county manager. The Board had requested that the committee score and rank the firms that responded, and bring back those rankings to the Board for their decision. There were six firms that provided responses, and those are listed on the agenda. And the committee's score sheets, ranking sheets are also attached. So, if you have any questions regarding the process, but at this point, it's requesting your direction.
Mr. Pritchett, you have the floor.
I appreciate all of your work in vetting all these for us, and I like your recommendations. I was just going to request that, since you weren't able to meet any, maybe we could have your top two proposals come in and address the commission, that we can kind of hear them, and then make a choice.
Commissioner Isnardi, you have the floor.
I thought that's why we selected a group to review, because they're going to come before us with the candidates, and we're going to have to... I just don't want to drag this out any longer than I have to. I, myself, would not have chosen to go with a firm, but since, you know, the majority of the Board are going that way, I don't want to delay it. Since Mr. Whitten's leaving on the 30th of April, I don't want there to be any more delays. I'd rather us focus on hurrying up and getting those eligible candidates in here.
Okay, anyone else? We have one card. Mr. Charbonneau?
I have just one question on the interview for county manager positions. And has any... I'm just asking a question, and I don't know the answer. If anybody knows it, fine, give it to me. Has anybody asked our current Human Resources Department, are they capable of doing this themselves? I mean, has the question even been asked? Just want to know. Yes, and they said they couldn't do it?
That was part of the process. We did ask the Human Resources Department, their opinions, their thoughts. We discussed this in front of the public last meeting.
But they didn't think they were capable?
That wasn't the reason. I can give you my reasons. Mr. Barfield and I are the only two people up here that have ever hired or fired anybody. And I've never hired anybody of this magnitude with this kind of salary. And so, I felt the first shot out, I would be doing a disservice to this community, if I didn't get all the help I could. And being... Excuse me, since I was on the selection committee, I thought it was extremely important for us to do the best job we could. So, that's the reason I pushed.
I don't disagree with you at all. I'm just asking the question.
That's the answer.
Has anybody asked the HR department, you know, could you do this or not? If they say, "No, we can't do it, go ahead and hire somebody else," that's fine.
No, they didn't say that. We made the decision.
So, nobody asked them?
They were asked. They were part of the conversation.
And so, they just remained silent, or did they say no?
They gave us the reasons why they could, and why they thought it was a good idea to go out and forbid.
All right, that's an answer. All right, thanks.
Okay, I would like to weigh in on this. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to answer.
No, I'll go last.
I was going to make a motion, but please read it first.
We can make a motion, we can still make discussions.
Okay, I was just going to make a motion, that the next meeting, that we could have the top two come in, so that we could interview them. I think waiting a week or two would be good for us to do. You had a difference of opinion with a couple of the other... It's all in the top three, and they're good, but I would like to interview Narlitch and the Mercer Group. I asked a question about the Mercer Group, and they had only shopped for like, three positions like this over the last couple of years. I think that's the information I was given when I asked, and they could be a great group, but I just think it would be good for us to, as we're making this decision, go ahead and talk to both the groups, because you guys didn't get to meet them personally, correct?
Correct.
So, I think that would just be a good thing for us to do, since you guys have done all the hard work on the rest of it.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Isnardi.
And see, in a perfect world, I would agree with that. However, we had two ranking members of that group, because there was only three. Our head of HR and our county attorney ranked the other group that was ultimately ranked first, first. So, while I appreciate, you know, the idea that we can wait more weeks, but we've waited several weeks for us to even come to the opportunity to select a headhunter. So, since we're going this route, and again, I would have at least first liked to have used our own HR department, because I believe that we do have a lot of qualified candidates, and we do have the resources to save the money from having to use a headhunter slash lobbyist to find a county manager. We've already delayed the process so long, that whatever group that we select is going to bring us a boatload of candidates. So, because it's at our direction, on what type of candidates we want, how many we want to see. And again, now we're transitioning with our current manager leaving, at the same time somebody's coming in, if we're lucky. Now, while I know that Mr. Abate is more than capable of holding the fort until we get somebody in that position, I would ideally, in a perfect world, would like to have Mr. Whitten here, as that transition occurs. So, I mean, these are the... Again, this wasn't my first choice in the route to go, but since we've taken this step, again, we've already delayed this several weeks. I just want to move forward and get the candidates in front of us, and we can have 10 people come before us and make their pitch, but I want to get moving on this.
Commissioner Pritchett.
Yeah, I want to make a motion, interview the top two candidates.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pritchett, to interview the top two candidates. We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Let me just interject here, since I was part of this group of three. These top two candidates, let me just give you some of the notes that I wrote down. The Mercer Group, I wrote that they were very hands-on. They offer bi-weekly reports on the search, so during the process of the interviews, they'll be giving us updates bi-weekly. They would meet with each commissioner individually and together at workshops, so they'll be seeking each of one of us out for our thoughts, as they go through the process. They want to present eight to 10 candidates, some of the others only wanted to produce five. They have an extensive list, and as you mentioned, they haven't done much in the last couple of years, but they have an extensive list of Florida cities and counties with positions that they filled. They have an office in Volusia County, so they're nearby. One of the other things that I was impressed with, that their process, they anticipate only an 11-week process. Some of the others wanted as many as 18 and 24 weeks. So, I thought that was an important issue. And they give us a 24-month warranty. As I had mentioned at the last meeting, we could have up to an 18-month warranty. This is a 24-month warranty, and how the warranty works is that if they produce someone that we hire, and for some reason, during that first 24 months, that person were to leave either by our choice, or his or her choice, they would go back to work at no extra charge, and find us another candidate, or candidates, to interview. So, I thought that was very important. The number-two organization, they are also a Florida-owned company, and they're woman-owned. They have 25 years' experience, and they have extensive county placements in Florida. One of the things that struck me in their prospectus was that they think that the best candidate often is one that's not looking, which I thought was an interesting concept. And so, I would like to ask them, if this passes, how do you go about finding someone that isn't actively looking? How do you pull that nugget from another county or city that isn't actively looking? So, that would be most curious. They say that they develop an interview process for objectivity, and they will respond to inquiries within 24 hours. So, if you, as one of the commissioners, have a question, you can call their office, and you can get an answer within 24 hours, rather than wait for bi-weekly updates. And they offer a one-year warranty, as opposed to a two-year. So, those are the notes that I took for these two. Commissioner Pritchett?
No, sir, that's all.
That's all. Okay. Commissioner Isnardi?
And I wouldn't be opposed to this, but had this been the desire of commission from the get-go, we probably should have done this before we got to this point. We could have looked at the ranking sheet, and we could have met with them individually, or done our part, then again, to delay this, because the second group, which if this commission, if that's the goal, is to go with the second group, let's just make the motion now, because that would work, too. I just would like to move the process along. The second-ranked person was ranked third by the other two people, so that's something to consider as well, even though they're second in the line. I'm not going to argue about this, because it's clear the votes aren't there, but I just want to say that we could have saved some time by... You know, if that was the intention early on, then we probably should have been a little better organized, if this is where we're going to go, because all of us could have met with the top two, and saved ourselves the time with our recommendation at this meeting to move forward.
Well, you're assuming that those two would have been available, or those six would have been available for... This is actually the faster way to do the process, because we moved pretty quickly. We only got all this information last Monday.
Right.
And we moved forward very quickly. We met on... What was it, Friday? We met on Friday, so that gave us four days to view and review, and now, four days later, we're presenting our options to you guys, so it's actually moving pretty quickly.
Right. Again, like I said, if the intention is because it's not the person that somebody else may want, then let's just hire the person, because we're just dragging this on further, and I worry that we're doing a disservice ultimately, because we're arguing over who's going to hire, or the firm we're going to hire, that's going to recommend... It's just, to me, it's just a waste of time. Because time is money.
So, then you can vote no on the motion, and move forward with number one.
I will, but I just wanted to express what my concerns were.
Mr. Tobias, you have the floor.
Hey, Mr. Chair. I wasn't involved in this process, and I appreciate the extra work that you guys put into this. My question is, if we do go ahead with this motion, do we... I don't know where these two firms, they're both Florida-based, do we know that both of these firms would have the availability to come to the next meeting? Because, you know, I'm sure they have schedules worked out, and if they were not available, both of them were not available, that could push the process back even more. So, do we have any indication of their availability coming up? Because obviously, we only meet on certain dates.
Leslie.
Yeah, both firms, all of the firms have been notified of what's going on this afternoon. Typically, these firms are aware that you're ready to proceed, and get going on this, so they are ready. Actually, one of the firms was ready to come tonight, so I think they are expecting that whatever decision you make, that if you look at the one and two, or however you proceed, that they're ready to be available to come meet.
And before we vote, I just want to make one other comment. The three of us all agreed that every one of these six were very qualified. Whichever one we picked was going to produce a quality candidate. So, then it just became, for me, what did they have to offer, and how much they were going to charge? And the Mercer Group was the cheapest, and I thought that they were quite competent as well, but I liked the second group as well, so that's my input. So, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Pritchett, and a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor of bringing in two, the top two? Was that your motion?
Yes, sir.
Bring in the top two for an interview with the commission? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, passes 3-2. The nay votes are Commissioner Tobias and Commissioner Isnardi.
Do we need to set a date when they're going to be here?
Yes, the next meeting, you said, the 21st?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I have some comments that I want to read. Mr. Whitten, would you happen to have a copy of that, the comments that I had requested? Somehow, they disappeared from my book. I had given this to Mr. Whitten, and so, I'm going to read it to everyone here. There are two matters that I believe we need to address regarding the transition to the next county manager. One is that the county manager has advised that he will lose the payout of 539 hours of sick leave, as he currently has over 1,770 hours of buildup sick leave. He could try to exhaust as much sick leave between now and April 30th, which I appreciate that he's indicated that he has a tremendous amount of transition that must occur between now and April 30th. In other words, he could just say, "I'm going to take this sick leave and go home, and we have to muddle through without him." But he's been a dedicated employee, who obviously has only used sick leave when absolutely necessary, and recall that he did provide us with 90 days' notice, instead of the 60 days that are required in his contract. In consideration of the 90 days' notice, and his commitment to bring to a closure the various transitional matters, I believe it is in the best interest of the county to authorize the payout of an additional 160 hours of sick leave. Excuse me. I would like one of the commissioners to make a motion, or I can pass the gavel and make the motion myself.
I gladly make the motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. Any discussion? Okay. Well, I've said my piece, so I don't have to think I have to say anymore. Mr. Whitten's been a very dedicated employee. He's given us the 90 days' notice, instead of 60. He's willing to sacrifice some of the sick time that we owe him. I think he's very generous on his part. So, the motion is that we accept this. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 4-1. Commissioner Tobias, the nay vote. And one other point, the Board needs to formally appoint Mr. Abate as the interim county manager effective May 1st, 2017. I know we're not going to have anybody on board by then, because the fastest of these groups say that it's going to take 11 weeks. So, I would ask for a motion by one of the commissioners to formally appoint Mr. Abate as the interim county manager, May 1st.
Motion to...
Motion to appoint Mr. Obate as the interim county manager, May the 1, 2017?
We have a motion by Commissioner Zanardi. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Passes 5-0.
Staff and I are looking at each other, so I guess I'll take it. This is a legislative intent and permission to advertise economic development tax exemption ordnance amendment regarding Arconia Corporation. Effectively, it deals with the change of address and the abandonment of a vacant piece of property in favor of a property that has a building, which changes their circumstances. We need to change the ordinance.
Mr. Tobias, your lights on. Is that for this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. May I proceed?
Sure, absolutely. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pulled the old ordinance, or staff did for me, and I appreciate that. 2015-20, where the tax abatement is granted, the word "and" is used. Expanded facility and tangible personal property. Now, they were to receive an 80% ad valorem tax abatement, and this is for substantially less, almost two-thirds less. But it's my understanding that the word "and" means they have to follow both of those qualifications. And I think that's the reason they've come up here. Now, Arconia made a decision to voluntarily, and, you know, to voluntarily, instead of building, to move about two and a half miles away. They have put forth whatever, $2 million, I guess, in property, or, sorry, in equipment, and $1.4 million in purchasing the building, the existing building. So this is a company that is $3.4 million invested in Brevard, with the understanding that by moving, the ordinance would not go into effect. Now, this, according to staff, is about a $9,000 abatement. So, you know, over eight years, that's $72,000. I don't think we're in, I don't think we need to worry about a company that's invested $3.4 million in Brevard County from leaving. I think this $72,000 in abatement could be used in more wise ways. And I think that they voluntarily decided to not break, but go against the wishes of this ordinance. And one other thing on top of that, I'm just a little concerned about the timeline here. And I think the board needs to understand this. This ordinance was passed long before many of us were here, July 22, 2015. In May of 2016 is when they purchased the property. Nine months later, nine entire months later, is when the EDC apparently notified the county. So we're seeing this. I'm just concerned that we have a business here, and it takes nine months for us to hear that, instead of building a piece of property, they are moving. So I would be against the advertisement of this. I'd like to hear other comments before I would make a motion. But I think it was very important to mention the "and" in the ordinance, and I have a copy of that if anyone needs it.
Mr. Knox, I would ask you to weigh in on this. Does this fit the parameters of what the voters voted on?
Well, for a lot of reasons, I think. The commissioner raised this with me this afternoon, and I don't agree with him, and I can provide that in writing to all of you and explain why I don't agree with him. But I think the ad valorem tax exemption can apply to either property, real property and potential personal property, or to both, depending upon what the corporation is actually doing. In this case, they originally wanted to come in and build a building on a vacant piece of property. They decided not to do that, and they bought a building that exists now, and they put their tangible personal property, which is new equipment, into that building. The ordinance that was passed covers both. So in the absence of having new construction, they don't get a tax exemption. That's pretty much where you have to look at the ordinance. And if you look at the Constitution and the state law that implements it, it's pretty clear that it's an either-or situation, or a both situation. It can be either or. So I will gladly provide you with a written viewpoint on that. All we're asking for tonight is legislative intent and permission to advertise. If you go forward and you don't agree after you see what I write, you're going to have to repeal the ordinance anyway. So you might as well go forward and do either adopt it at the next meeting.
Do our due diligence and go from there.
Yeah, it's going to have, something has to be done one way or the other.
Okay. So you're looking for a motion to approve the legislative intent of this?
And permission to advertise.
And permission to advertise. Mr. Witten.
Mr. Chairman, just to be clear on this, this ordinance actually does, if you will, take away the exemption on the real property and only applies it to the tangible property. So it is a correction of the previous ordinance in that they had originally planned to either build or expand a building. They went away from that plan into an existing building. And so if you move forward, they no longer have, would be eligible for the real property exemption, and they would have only the tangible property exemption.
Thank you for that input. Any other comments from the board? Commissioner Zanardi.
Yeah, that was some of the questions that I had had before. Now, you don't think it would be better, again, we were talking about repeal versus, I mean, it makes more sense to repeal it and bring back something else. I'm okay with advertising. I just wanted to be clear that's what was going to happen.
Well, I think your choices are going to, we could do it any of three ways. You can do it the way we've got it done right now. You can repeal the ordinance in its entirety, not grant the exemption, which is another option. Or you can go back and just start all over again and get a new application on just the tangible personal property.
And see, and where I took issue with this is not because of what, you know, the circumstances that happened to this company. I don't believe that they did anything sideways or wrong or shady. I just think that, you know, because the terms have changed so much, it should be its own offering. It shouldn't be a modification of the ordinance, because the terms have changed so significantly.
Well, in substance, it really hasn't, because the tangible personal property was approved the first time.
Right.
And that's movable. You can move it anywhere in the county if you want to.
But would the...
But the real estate goes away.
But would the board have approved just the tangible personal property is the bigger question?
Well, that's something you can certainly bring up. I mean, if you have a public hearing on it and you choose not to grant it, you can certainly do that.
Right. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve this legislative intent and permission to advertise?
I move to move forward with advertising. We can discuss it next time it comes back.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor of moving forward with this for legislative intent and permission to advertise, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 5-1. Commissioner Tobias being the nay vote.
4-1.
4-1, I'm sorry. Can't count. Just checking to see if you're on your toes. Move in the new business. 6A1.
Okay. Good evening, commissioners. This is a large agenda package, so I'd like to spend a few minutes introducing it to you. I promise not to do the 78 slides that I did a year ago. But you have four requested actions. And so just, you know, in the last year, this was all sort of kicked off with an algal bloom, a very intensive and extensive algal bloom in January through March that resulted in the largest fish kill recorded in Brevard County last March a year ago. And as a result of that, the county commission sent a letter to the governor requesting assistance. The county was advised by the governor's staff to develop a project plan with a comprehensive list of projects. So the board directed staff to develop such a plan and to explore mechanisms for a dedicated funding source for implementing that plan. At the time, back in April, the thought was that that might be a special taxing district collecting some sort of property tax that would start effective next fiscal year. On August 9, the board adopted the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan. Two weeks later, they adopted referendum language to place on the November 8 ballot for a half-cent infrastructure sales tax. The half-cent infrastructure sales tax, as you know, began collection, was approved by the voters, and began collection in January. So that allowed us an opportunity to look at this plan, look for projects that could be implemented sooner than the way the plan was drafted with an October 2017 start. Also, in the board's action on August 23 of 2016, they established an ordinance with a volunteer citizen oversight committee. The role of this committee is to recommend updates for the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan to the county commission annually, and to provide public oversight and a transparent process that not only allows, but fosters development and implementation of better, less costly, and/or more timely tools and techniques for restoring the lagoon. On the top of the second page of your agenda, there's one typo that I just want to correct. It says that collections began January 1 of 1017. Obviously, that's supposed to be 2017. It just didn't seem worthy of sending you out a corrected agenda page. In order to accelerate recovery of the lagoon's health and associated economic benefits, county staff reached out to the municipalities and other community partners to find shovel-ready projects that could proceed during the current fiscal year. In total, 42 projects were recommended by the citizens oversight committee for consideration by you tonight. These substitute projects, recommended in the 2017 supplement to the Indian River Lagoon Project Plan, replace the least cost-effective of the previously planned projects of the same type in the same sub-lagoon area, thereby delivering comparable pollution reduction benefits sooner and at a reduced total cost. The 42 projects that are recommended are, that show, demonstrate great community participation. They're distributed from MEMS to MECO. They represent all project types considered in the lagoon plan. They will remove nearly 100,000 pounds of nitrogen and over 10,000 pounds of phosphorus. The oversight committee, also in your packet, the oversight committee recommended that you consider guidance criteria for how they should consider and staff should vet substitution projects going forward. And then there's also a financial statement for your review. So the four actions are to review and approve an update to the lagoon plan. The plan that was drafted last summer and adopted on August 9 needed a few little tweaks. So one thing was to change the source of funding from a millage-based thing to the half-cent sales tax. There's also a clause in there recognizing the potential to leverage additional funds from other sources, clarifying what areas of the lagoon are included. There was some less-than-clear language about the Sebastian area of the central Indian River Lagoon. We've clarified that language. The oversight committee was named something slightly different. And the intent is the same, but the name was a little different in the original plan. So changing that to the citizens oversight committee to match the ordinance that was adopted by the board of county commissioners in August. We found two decimal places that were out of place, and we got those corrected, those Scrivener errors. And there was one map that was missing in Appendix A. The text was in the text, but the corresponding map was missing. So we've slotted that in. So those are the changes to document Attachment A in your plan, the plan update. You've got the guidance criteria recommended by the oversight committee to ensure compliance with the intent of the referendum. Then you have the 2017 supplement to the project plan. This is the document that includes the 42 projects recommended by the oversight committee. And it also takes the projects that were in the original plan that will be unfunded in order to free up dollars to fund these 42 new projects. It puts them in a separate table, so you can see what projects are getting funded versus what projects are becoming unfunded. They're there in a parking lot situation, so that if additional revenues from other sources come in, those projects are ready to go back into the funded category and proceed. And then the fourth item is to recommend expenditures listed on the 2017 financial statement, and authorize necessary budget change requests to set those up in the county's Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barker. We have lots of cards. Imagine that. First up is Suzanne Valencia. Come on down.
Thank you, Suzanne Valencia. I live in West Melbourne, Florida, and naturally, I worked very hard and supported the sales tax. And I don't, I mean, I trust Virginia explicitly. I don't know what the issue is tonight. I'm a little confused about that. Can you enlighten me?
She just did that for the last 10 minutes. Do you want to summarize, Virginia?
In order to get started on the plan right away, we need to amend the plan and add new projects and adopt a budget for this fiscal year.
Thank you. I support that.
What else can I say?
Jeff Chandler.
Hey, my name is Jeff Chandler. I live in South Brevard County. I've been there for 23 years. I've been in the area for 45. I've grown up on the river. I also supported the half percent in the tax. And very, so I support, you know, projects in the lagoon area. The one project I haven't really heard detail talked about was a project that I guess is proposed to go from Barefoot Bay to MECO area. My question is, is how far is it going to go into the MECO area? If it's going to stop at a certain point, I feel that those monies should be allocated to go all the way to the bridge, just like Indian River County did with their sewer system. A lot of the impact in that area is along the water, in the Little Hollywood area. A lot of houses, residences, businesses, and the whole nine yards. So if a particular project is to be approved, I think we should think hard about where it stops. Even if that means, instead of taking, say, tying into Barefoot Bay, that was only big enough to handle Barefoot Bay, now you're putting a heavy volume of southern Brevard County, MECO area into that. I don't feel that there will be enough volume for that plant to handle it. Maybe the money should be allocated to building a plant in South Brevard County, something, instead of wasting, putting the Band-Aid on 20, 30 houses or businesses, allocate that money to be used to put a plan in that could suffice the whole southern area, especially those places located on the water. And I just want that to be heard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
MJ Waters.
Thank you. I'm MJ Waters. I live in Vieira, Florida. I'm a resident of Brevard County for more than 30 years. And I'm currently on the executive steering committee of the Brevard Indian River Lagoon Coalition. We are a coalition of approximately 30 organizations throughout the county that were very much involved in passing the referendum this year. We have... We have been attending the Citizen Oversight Committee meetings. In fact, we were huge advocates of having that committee formed as part of this referendum. And we really, we gave some input to the committee, and we very much appreciate their taking that very seriously. They had a great discussion, and the guidance that was adopted is in part because of our input to that committee. We're very pleased to see the projects approved, and we're excited to see them started in the near future. And we're here to ask that you approve the project plan update and all the projects in it, and we will continue to go to the Citizen Oversight Committee meetings and share that information with our strategic partners. Thank you very much.
My name is George Rosenfeld. I live in Suntree. I am an environmental scientist retired. For the enlightenment of the three new county commissioners, I present a short history of the Indian River Lagoon situation. I apologize to Commissioners Barfield and Smith because they heard this last August before voting for the one-half-cent sales tax. Efforts to save the Indian River Lagoon go back in time to before July 86, 1986, when I returned to Brevard County. Mrs. Diane Burrell, adjunct professor at Oceanography at Florida Tech, realized that the Indian River Lagoon was in danger. She had already organized an American Assembly of accredited persons that established the Marine Resources Council. They developed a plan of action, and that had already taken effect. Baffle boxes were installed in the barrier islands and other places to catch stormwater runoff from roads. They were to be cleaned every couple months; they needed cleaning every couple weeks. Major roads and developments were retrofitted with catchment ponds to retain and filter stormwater runoff. Volunteers were recruited to measure oxygen content of lagoon water at a myriad of locations along the lagoon at time intervals. Also established was a right whale watch to keep track of those animals. With the first hands across the bridges, all in the same day at noon, at five major bridges along the 157-mile length of the lagoon, a light plane flew and photographed all the bridges and the hundreds of people. Photos were sent to the Florida governor, who designated the Indian River Lagoon as a lagoon of national significance. This resulted in a grant of $3 million from Federal Environmental Protection Agency to establish the National Estuary Program of the Indian River Lagoon. Many point sources of pollution were given just a few years by the Florida state government to stop sewer treatment plants from dumping raw sewage effluent into the creeks and thus the lagoon, thus the Vieira and Titusville wetlands. Some cities opted for deep wells with cavernous bottoms to contain the effluent. Finally, the first CCMP, Comprehensive Conservation Management Plan for the Indian River Lagoon, was compiled from all counties the length of the lagoon and published in 1996. It was revised in years 2000 and 2010. Along the way, the first invasive plant removal pepper buster to eradicate Brazilian pepper trees was started and still continuing. Muck removal at selected areas throughout the lagoon were also conducted, and we recently passed the fertilizer ordinance. I don't know what other actions I may have forgotten. We have passed the Save Our Lagoon Project Plan over the next 10 years, costing $302.9 million to save the Indian River just in Brevard County. This with the blessing of the County Commission and the populous voting yes on the August election. We will do muck removal, stormwater projects, upgrade sewer treatment plants, remove and upgrade septic systems, manage fertilizer use, oyster reef development, educate the public. I will look forward to again seeing the white sand bottom of the lagoon all the way across and again eat the delicious clams I used to dig and the banana-ribbon chicken mullet that used to be served all over the county. And in 10 years, I'll only be 100 years old. I wanted to put on the record that it was Diane Burrell who started all this Indian River Lagoon restoration more than 30 years ago. I don't want her to be forgotten.
Courtney Barker, City of Satellite Beach. I'm also a member of the Oversight Committee. And tonight, I just wanted to come out and support the submitted plan amendment and budget as submitted by Virginia. I do want to make sure that she does get the administrative expenses covered that she's asked for. I have a lot of night conversations on Sundays and Saturdays with Virginia, so I know that they are overworked right now, and they do need the extra help in the office to get these things done. So I'm hoping that that gets done. I do also want to make sure that, you know, Ms. Waters described the input that we got at the Oversight Committee from the residents that basically wanted to make sure that if we were to cover the expenses of a project that we had already budgeted for, that any money that was freed up will go to another lagoon project. So we want to make sure that the county is also following kind of that same standard and that as we approve the budgets, we want to make sure that the funds go to new projects or existing projects that would free up existing money to another lagoon project, but not past debt service, not existing staff, things like that. We want to make sure that that is clear for the community and that the county follows that same standard. So with that, I just want to say thank you to you all for the support of the tax and also to, a huge thank you to the county staff and the Natural Resources Department. You couldn't ask for a harder-working group of people, and you could not ask for a more dedicated, smart group of people, so they really know what they're doing. So we appreciate it.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tony Dutton, and I reside in Suntree. I voted for and support strongly the special Indian River Lagoon sales tax and the procedures for its use that were adopted by our Brevard County taxpayers last year. The county's Natural Resources Management Department and the Volunteer Citizens Oversight Committee, working together, will have all the skills and information needed to select the best projects for and uses of the lagoon sales tax proceeds. Hence, I am speaking this evening to encourage you, over the coming 10 years of the tax, to follow their advice and recommendations. Please, unless some special circumstance should exist, resist any temptation to substitute the judgment of another for that of the department and the committee in approving any lagoon projects or allocating any sales tax proceeds. This is a wonderful and unique opportunity for our county and its citizens.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Mary Hilberg. I'm 3780 Sierra Drive in North Merritt Island. I'm a native of Merritt Island, and I've lived here my entire life. I move very slowly. So as a member of the North Merritt Island Homeowners Association, which represents over 5,000 residents on North Merritt Island, as well as having greater than 500 of whom are current members of the association, I'm a board member of that, and we are very much in support of the Indian River Lagoon project and plan. We urge this commission to please approve the update and to please make sure that all the funds for the lagoon stay in the lagoon, in any way that it can be moved around to make sure that they're there in the lagoon. And we'd also like to thank Virginia and her staff for a spectacular job.
Did I pronounce that correctly?
Absolutely.
Wow.
Hi.
See, that blind squirrel can catch a, not every now and then.
I am Linda Barrett, and I'm, or Barrett, Barrett. And I live here in Vieira, as I have for the last over a dozen years. I would like to say that Virginia and her staff did a wonderful job coming up with this plan. I was at the meeting where it was approved by the commission, and thank you, those of you who were there for that. And now, if she's requesting an update, I would like to ask your support for that also and say that that money should be used, what we, the voters, voted for, for the lagoon should stay in the lagoon. And please use the money for lagoon projects. Thank you very much.
Good evening. Mary Sparr, 825 Clifton's Cove Court, Cocoa. I'm speaking for Turtle Coast Sierra Club. Turtle Coast Sierra Club is a big supporter of the referendum in the Indian River Lagoon Project Plan. Our members work very hard to see this passed, and our hearts are really in it. And we're glad to see the implementation of the project plan moving forward tonight with the action you will take. We want to see a critical mass of nutrient reduction achieved as soon as possible to greatly increase the chances that the lagoon will be healthy. And the faster the plan is implemented, the faster this critical mass of nutrient reduction can be achieved. And that's why it's so important to do everything we can to accelerate the pace of the implementation of the project plan. Now, one thing that really will help to accelerate the plan is the hiring of people for the six staff positions, and that is in your agenda item tonight. Also, I noticed that the adaptive management section of the project plan was revised so that you can now receive updates from the Citizen Oversight Committee at least annually instead of before, it was just annually. So this may allow us to accelerate the plan in case circumstances change or monitoring shows a need for a tweak in one of the projects or the path that we're taking. So thank you so much for supporting our lagoon. Turtle Coast Sierra Club is very happy to see you doing this.
Pleasure with the Board. Comments?
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Thwai. Are we going to vote on this cumulatively, or are we going to handle each one of the four parts that Ms. Barker outlined for us?
I would say that we could do them cumulatively unless somebody has some objections to any one of them.
I would just have a question, a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I was a little skeptical. I think we had a talk about it, but, and I stayed away from the Citizens Oversight Committee because I wanted to be as objective as possible. And when Virginia sat down with me and explained the way that the process went and how empirical it was, I was very impressed with the way that they handled this from a very objective standpoint. So full support on, and I looked over all the projects. So not being, not doing very well in biology, I still thought, and was very impressed with not only your work, but the Citizens Oversight Committee. So I certainly want to thank all those volunteers for taking the time, who cared so much. My question, and we had this discussion, and I think someone in my staff asked today, was concerning the FTE. And my, I think we got an answer back that the Citizens Oversight Committee did not deal directly with the staff. So my question is this. I went to the referendum, and the referendum talks about the way the funding will be spent, and the last sentence in the referendum says, "with Citizens Committee Oversight." I think lots of the speakers indicated that they were very adamant that we stuck with the advisement of the Citizens Advisory Committee, Oversight Committee. And since this funding did not go through the committee, are you concerned that if we were to appropriate those funds, and it's quite a bit of funds, it's, you know, minimum 299, up to 300-some thousand per year, that we would be violating the referendum? That's my first question.
So I have two answers. One is the financial statement that is Attachment D of your agenda packet. That's the same financial statement that the Oversight Committee received at their last meeting and was comfortable with. The second answer is that the ordinance that was adopted by the County Commission last year states the role of the Oversight Committee and the uses of the trust fund. And there's, I believe it's Item 5 in Section 16 or 17, that includes the administrative O and M costs. That does not fall technically under the role of the Citizen Oversight Committee. That falls to the County Commission. So while technically, according to the ordinance, the committee doesn't have to approve those positions, they are aware of the positions, and they were comfortable with the financial statement as presented to them and included in your packet. So no, I am not concerned. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One follow-up, Mr. Chair, is that okay?
Sure, absolutely.
And again, thank you. The only reason I have these questions is because you took so much time to sit down with me and help me out, and I greatly do appreciate this, and I don't mean to impute, I just want all, as much information. I looked at Year Zero, and we went over this, and it looks like 16 of the 18 projects are pass-throughs to the cities, meaning that the city will, from my understanding of our conversation, will complete the work. Once the work's done, if we go ahead with the contract, we will write a check to reimburse the city for the expenses that they went, put forth. It looks like Year Zero, which runs through September 30th, there are only two county projects. And it looks like those county projects cumulatively add up to only 500, well, 501,000 and a few dollars. So, and I know we talked about administrative expenses. So are you comfortable with spending, and it's only for six months, so I can't, I can't impute the entire $300,000, but would you be comfortable with, from my understanding of the conversation, $150,000 or 30% of the oversight for these two projects, these six employees at this juncture? Or do you think it would be wise to wait till maybe hiring these folks until we get to Year One, when the county has a larger percentage of the projects and has more money to manage? money to manage?
We've looked at the timing of filling these positions, too. The... Part of this is, we need to develop contracts with scopes of work with all of these cities, and those terms need to be correct. We need to find the right people, and get them in the positions, and get them trained and up and running, because we've got 51... Over $51 million worth of projects planned for next year, starting October 1st. And so, we need to go ahead and get most of these people in place now, so that they can hit the ground running.
And the $300,000 is an annual amount, and so by the time that they come on staff, you'll be at a... Probably somewhere... Probably on the other side of half of the fiscal year, so... And as a practical matter, you probably won't spend $300,000 this year. You'll be closer to the $150,000.
Do you have any other questions?
No, but if you wouldn't mind, I would feel more comfortable if we addressed these issues, and we voted on them separately instead of aggregate.
I don't have a problem with that. Okay, so the first one is review and approve the Save Our Indian River Lagoon project plan update, Attachment A.
I'll start, I'll make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett to approve.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. Any discussion on this one particular issue? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Pass is 5-0. Number two, review and approve the guidance for ensuring compliance with the intent of the referendum. Any comment?
Mr. Chair, on that one, my understanding is there... The contract is still being drafted right now by staff. I'm wondering, is it premature to vote on the intent, or should we wait till the contract's drafted, so we can look it over before we vote on it? What... You're the chairman, what do you think would be best?
Why don't we pass this off to the attorney? Mr. Knox.
What you're acting on is the expression of intent that the oversight committee would like to see you adopt. The actual language was proposed, it's probably going to be tweaked before we ever get into a contract form, and you're going to see the contract. So, I think you'll see it again.
Okay. So the answer is, we can pass this, but we still have control over going forward.
Yeah, you'll still get to approve the language.
Okay. So, does that answer your question, Mr. Thibodeau? Okay, so do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Barfield makes a motion to review and approve the guidance for ensuring the compliance with the intent of the referendum. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Isnardi. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass is 5-0. Number three, review and approve the 2017 supplement to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon project plan. Any comment? Do we have a motion?
So move.
Commissioner Barfield makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass is 5-0. Number four, review the recommended expenditures listed on the proposed February 17 financial statement, and authorize necessary budget change requests for the current fiscal year. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Commissioner Pritchett makes a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry.
My light was on, I apologize.
No.
And I could have talked about this before. See, it's difficult for me, because I look at our Department of Natural Resources with having a lot of people in it. And with six people, even if it's 45 projects, for me, that just does seem like a lot. I mean, in my opinion. But I am not a scientist. I mean, I like to pretend to be a health scientist, you know, with my profession and such, but anybody could say... What if they came to us and said they needed 10 employees? Not saying that that's what the county, or what staff, would do. I just think that six is a lot of employees. I think we could probably do a better job and use some of that labor in-house, because we're going to be paying consultants and project managers anyway, when we have to have those expenses, so... Because there's benefits tied to that, and you know the dollar amount. So I would, you know, be happier with less employees, myself. Because I don't think it's too many projects, because there's... Employees take on a lot less. I know this is important, I know, I realize that, but we also have a Department of Natural Resources, I think, that could pick up some of this. So...
Your opinion is duly noted. Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
Yes, sir. I asked Ms. Barker for an analysis, and they've been, up to this point, running $20 to $26 million in a budget with 44 staff. So we're increasing it by $34 million plus. So I thought six people seemed very reasonable. Ms. Barker, I'm guessing if you hire four, and you got it done, you're not going to hire two more people after that. You're basically hiring to bring excellence to the project of how we manage these funds with the taxpayer dollars, correct?
I think there are two things. One is excellence, thanks for using that word, the other is timeliness. We need to have expertise in each of the kinds of projects that are moving forward. If you look at this... The county's departments that do these kinds of projects, if you look at the state programs that do these kinds of projects, or the federal programs, they don't all exist in one department. They... At the state level, it's the Department of Environmental Protection, the Department of Environmental Health. So the expertise that's needed for all these different kinds of projects aren't going to be in one or two people. We need each person to specialize in a specific thing, so that we can deliver the best projects for the lagoon.
That makes me a little more comfortable, so that you're not overworked, and all of a sudden, just throwing money out to a place, so that we can expend it. So I... I'm very comfortable with that, after talking to you yesterday, and I think you're going to do a great job with this.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Barfield.
Yeah, whenever these projects get going, you're talking $30 million worth of work, and spread out with a bunch of different projects, there's a whole lot that goes into just managing the projects. And you have to also understand that this is... We're also dealing with environmental, which is a lot of permitting, and there's a lot of reporting, there's a lot of other requirements. But from a business perspective, if you look at it, you run the numbers. If you're having $30 million worth of business that you're going to be doing, you're with 200... With the six people, you're going to end up at 0.7% of what your total budget is. Now, I'll tell you, in most businesses, you're looking much more for a higher percentage than that. But 0.7% to manage all that. So to me, I won't be concerned down the road, if... Especially when we get into a lot of the muck removal, if that's truly enough people to support. So I'm... It makes complete sense to me.
Commissioner Isnardi, you have the floor.
And I would agree, if their scope of work wasn't just the Indian River Lagoon, because, again, that's their expertise, that's what they're going to come in, and that's what they're going to be working on. I mean, I would be a little more, you know, hesitant if they were going to be pulled in eight different directions, handling other business within the county, but they are Indian River Lagoon committed employees. So, again, my comments still stand.
Okay, I'm going to weigh in on this a little bit, also. I've worked very closely with Director Virginia Barker over this many, seems like, years. But I have to tell you, I've never met a smarter, or a harder worker... Harder working person than... I mean, this lady works weekends. I don't know how many of you knew that, but she does. And so, being smart, and being a hard worker, I have full confidence that if she thinks she needs six people, or 26 people, that's what she needs. She's very, very diligent, she's not going to waste a penny. I would trust her with my last dime. And so, if she tells me that she needs six, then I think we should do everything we can to get her the six people. So with that... Do we have a motion to move forward?
I think we already do.
Oh, we did it?
We're voting on it.
Okay, so let's... All those in favor, do you want to read the motion, Tammy or Donna? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Passes 3-2. The nay votes are Commissioner Thibodeau and Commissioner Isnardi. Okay, 6D1.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to approve the final judgment... Stipulated final judgment in the B West case, which you discussed at executive session earlier, and we came back at the number you approved.
Comments from the board?
I make a motion, we approve the stipulated partial fund and judgment for the fees, and as we discussed.
Do we have a second?
We have a second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett, and you got him as the motion. Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Pass is 5-0. 6D2.
Mr. Chairman, this is a request to amend the USSA lease on the stadium complex. We have discovered a few scripters errors, which we wanted to correct. There's some other matters we need to go into, too. The USSA came to the county and asked if we could change the format for the acquisition of lighting and artificial turf for the fields, by going from a reimbursement arrangement, which is what we currently have under the lease, to a we-pay-direct-for-the-equipment and the turf. That will save them about estimated $600,000 in sales tax. That money would be... Come out of the $10 million that the county has signed its contract to deliver as reimbursement. So it'd just be a different way of paying the same amount of money. It wouldn't exceed... It wouldn't add a new obligation to the county. The other thing we need to change is the effective date of the lease, which is January 1st, 2017. Yeah, it was what they requested, because that's when they took possession, after the Nationals left. And last but not least, we would also recommend some kind of a clawback provision, in the event that, for some reason, the lights and turf wasn't installed by USSA, they would have to pay us back.
Commissioner Thibodeau, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's too bad the lagoon folks left, but this will have a direct impact on lagoon funding. The half penny will not be borne by these expenses here, so assuming it's $10 million, that would be tens of thousands of dollars that will not be collected for the lagoon restoration, if we were to do this type of funding. So that would be one of the issues that I would have with this new arrangement.
Commissioner Isnardi, you have the floor.
You know, reading through this, I was kind of like blown away, because I, you know, the answers are right here. I was going to call Mr. Witten before the meeting, and speak with him this afternoon, and perhaps he can clarify, but from what my understanding is that they were going to bond out and borrow $10 million on their own, and now we are paying directly for the expenses for the improvements?
The agreement has always been that the county, the tourist development tax was...
Agreed. But then, but they were going to front the money, and then we were going to reimburse, correct?
Yeah, it was reimbursable.
Right.
And this is similar to... Similar to when the Nationals came to town, and we had to change the seating, and we had to change the lighting. And so the Nationals had vendors that they worked with, and they got volume discount buying from. And so we paid directly for... To the Hussey Seat Company, and to the Moscow lighting vendor for those purchases. And so, they were going to be reimbursed, $10 million for improvements to the stadium. They're just simply asking that the county make a direct pay to the artificial turf vendors, to the lighting vendors, and associated construction personnel to get those improvements. But the county was always on the hook for the eventual reimbursement, or the payment of those expenditures.
And I agree, the county was on the hook for those expenditures, but that was once the US... Triple... Or US... I can't even say that. USSA Stadium, once they went ahead and did those improvements. Because my concern is, you know, we're paying for improvements for this company, and, you know, I'm just wondering why they couldn't secure the funding on their own. I mean, I know that they'll save sales tax, and they have an argument for it, but I get a little bit of heartburn at the idea of us paying private contractors for improvements to the stadium, that are basically going to benefit them. And going back and looking at some of the issues with even the original agreement, I mean, we granted this agreement with this organization without going out to RFP or bid. We could... We come up with an agreement, the agreement's been delayed, you know, some time, and now they're talking about not doing anything until the fall. So, again, my concerns, number one, are us paying contractors directly. And secondly, reading through this, we were supposed... One of the amendments to this agreement is waiving the bidding process with the county, which I take issue with, because we don't do that here, and they can basically hire whatever contractor they want to, and we're on the hook paying them directly. I just... There's just a lot of hair on this agreement, and I'm not comfortable with it. I would be perfectly fine with withholding them true to the original agreement, and I don't like the adjustments made to the new agreement. I don't think that it sits well, and I don't think that that's being good stewards with TDC monies.
Yeah, just... And I... Again, I have a 22-year history with the stadium, and I can tell you that, you know, in terms of, yes, the commissioner, you're correct, that it goes from a reimbursable to a direct pay of the improvements. The improvements are the property of the county. And so, again, the improvements, once they're made, they're assets of the county. You know, originally, the Marlins occupied the stadium, and then it was Major League Baseball, and then it was the Nationals. And I can tell you, we made, again, direct payments. Difference between this contract, and USSA is the largest amateur sports organization, I think, in the world. And so, the difference is, is that there's a guarantee associated with this contract of 75,000 room nights a year, and going up to 100,000 room nights a year. And we've put... We built the stadium for $7 million, and over the last 20 years, we've actually made probably $10 million in improvements, without one guaranteed room night from the Nationals. And so, this is a contract that allows a return on investment, different than a Major League Baseball was ever able to provide over the 20-something years of occupancy of the stadium. And again, this allows us to maintain the tourist development tax all five pennies, because, again, the issue has been, if you lose an agreement with a professional sports organization, or a amateur sports organization, then you lose not only a fourth cent, but you lose all five pennies of the tax. And so, when you look at the comparative return on investment, this contract versus the last three tenants of the stadium, this is far and away the best return on investment of the tourist development tax.
And again, I don't disagree with the initial agreement. I was okay with them fronting the money, and us reimbursing, because they are improvements to the stadium, but they are putting in artificial turf. And you mentioned the Nationals, and you talked about how we directly paid them. I mean, I wasn't here to make those decisions. And if that was a good decision then, then the bad decision was the fact that we don't get room reimbursement, or at least guaranteed room stay. So, again, it's not that I think that anybody has any ill intent, however, I don't like... There's too many changes to this agreement. I don't like the fact that the work that they are doing doesn't have to go out to bid, like we have to do in government, and these are tax dollars, and I don't think that this is the way that we should go. The original agreement, again, I had no problem with. If this was such a successful, and such a wonderful thing, and it was going to work, then why are we having to pay directly to contractors that aren't even bidding for the jobs that they'll be doing? I don't feel comfortable with that.
Mr. Knox, would you like to weigh in?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out a couple of things.
Number one, the county does have 75 days it has to, gets to use the stadium, so the improvements directly benefit the county's use of that stadium for most, that period of time. Number two, at the end of 20 years, this lease terminates, we, and we have a right to use that stadium forever, as well as the 30, the property to the north, which is under 30-year lease, so we have another 10 years on the VRA property as well, so that benefit remains for that 10 years. And number three, the $600,000 in savings that is coming out of the $10 million goes back into the ground, it's not going to Tallahassee's government. So I think the real issue there is whether or not you want to use the $600,000 to improve the stadium or send it up to Tallahassee.
Mr. Garby, I have a question for you. The 75,000 room nights, since they're not gonna occupy the stadium, or I assume that they're not gonna start games and tournaments and things until August or September, what's your confidence level that they're gonna be able to come up with 75,000 room nights in five months or four months?
Well, that 75,000 room nights was always contemplated to be an annual amount, so we wouldn't expect them to generate 75,000 nights within this calendar year, not knowing when they will actually begin play at the complex. We do hope that they can produce some events in September, but right now, we're really not looking at a full schedule of events until the beginning of 2018.
And when does it accelerate to 100,000 room nights? Year three?
After, year four.
Year four. Okay. And artificial turf, do you want to address the, the artificial turf subject?
Yeah, the, the artificial turf is a part of their strategy to fully utilize the complex and accommodate out-of-town teams. One of the issues that plagues many sports complexes is weather-related delays. And so by having the artificial turf, which has superior drainage, they're able to keep playing, you know, despite, you know, occurrences of weather. So it gives them more of assurance of, of use of the fields and, and allows them to maximize the utilization of the facility.
So in short, if they have 10 teams in town to play, and they've got three days to get all the games in, and it rains, then they can continue playing without having a delay because of the ground being muddy and treacherous?
Yeah, especially in the late summer, when we get those afternoon rain showers regularly.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners Nardi, do you have anything else?
Again, I guess want to reiterate, I am not against this organization coming in and doing this wonderful thing, but my problem is, is that I don't think, I think that if it was such a successful and such a wonderful thing, and they were very enthusiastic about coming, these terms wouldn't change to the degree that they are. They would be investing in that money themselves, they would be, and the competitive bid thing is a whole other issue, I think is way wrong. I mean, that just screams of just bad, it's just all bad. I don't think that that, I mean, that, that's just bad, especially with TDC monies going to reimburse that. But I think that if it was such a winning and wonderful thing, and I hope that it is, I really do, then why aren't, why don't they have the funding? Why aren't they investing in this wonderful, awesome organization of theirs to bring the project forward? I mean, I don't understand it, but it just seems like it's getting delayed, and...
Yeah, let me, let me, two points. Actually, this is an accelerated construction schedule, because the Nationals had the option to play this spring, and so they're there in advance of what we originally anticipated. And I think you, the attorney will tell you that we're putting in our 10, they're required to put in 250 for 10 years, I think it is, for the capital improvement fund, but also in the site, they're investing, we're putting in 10, they're, the number that I heard, they're gonna invest in excess of 22 million. So it is, it is, again, that's our part, but they're putting skin in the game also, and she may be able to elaborate on that.
But then why change the terms of the agreement? I mean, if, if, why do we have to pay their contractor that hasn't gone out to bid upfront? Why, why, I mean, directly? I know they want to save a few dollars, but to me, it just seems like it puts us at more risk, because in a perfect world, there would be no snafus and no hangups, but in the other side of reality, there's lawsuits and issues that we could potentially face if, if they don't live up to the bargain, and that puts us at greater risk.
I'll let her address.
Hi, I'm Wendy Anderson, I'm the attorney for USSA, and I just want to really be very clear that we are very, very excited about this project and very committed to it, and the only reason for this request is to take that $600,000 and put it into the project rather than into Tallahassee's coffers. And it's just really form over substance. The county's committed to pay that $10 million, and all we're asking is that they pay it directly rather than reimburse us. And it's not that we wouldn't do that, but it just seems if we can save $600,000, that that's a better use of the money to put it back into the project. We're gonna, we're gonna spend whatever it takes to make this a state-of-the-art facility.
Why are you requesting a waiver for bid then? I mean, a waiver to, to have to go out to bid for your projects?
I don't think we were ever required to.
Yeah, they're, they're required because, we're, we're required because we are purchasing directly from a vendor of record with them. And so, again, and USSA, and I don't know all the sites and the holdings, but they, they're able to take advantage of volume buying. And so because of the amount of turf that they're buying and that they buy from this particular vendor, they get a significant discount. And so for the county to go directly to that vendor requires the board to waive its, its bid requirements. Again, very similar to the seating, the Hussey seating that the Nationals require, and that was a waiver of the bid requirements, because, again, it was going directly to their vendor to obviously match the seats that they, that they had in the stadium. Actually, we changed out all of the seats. But to go to their vendor, because they had a history of buying from that vendor and could actually, because of the stadium in DC and here, that they actually were able to gain some volume discount on purchases. And they have, you know, the leverage of, the USSA has the leverage of being the largest amateur sports organization in the world, and so vendors are going to give them some volume discount to get their business.
Mr. Knox.
I think that was an old light.
Okay, well, let's just put the old light out, then. Any other comments from the board? So do we have a motion to approve the amendments?
You have a motion to approve the amendments?
Yeah, D2.
Yes, sir.
Okay. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Pritchett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barfield. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nays. Pass is 3-2. The nays are Commissioner Tabia and Commissioner Isnardi. Moving to 6F1.
All 130 chapters of the National Action Network have been informed that President Trump has told Jeff Sessions, the new US Attorney General, to back off of holding law enforcement accountable for their actions of violation of civil rights. That raises many red flags. In all 50 states, time after time, the people who are sworn to, to serve and protect cross the line, a sheriff oversight commission is needed in every city, county, and state. Many times, the person in charge looks the other way and refuses to remove bad apples. I'm only gonna give testimony on two cases. Channel 9 TV reporter Justin Gray was a victim of excessive force by the Brevard County Sheriff Office, a white male in 2013. He was falsely arrested for trespassing on private property, falsely arrested for resisting arrest, for refusing to talk to police, for Sergeant Knox's recording equipment out his hand and destroying it. He took legal action. One day after Father's Day, June 2016, a mother called us crying. She stated her son was shot and killed by an off-duty deputy in Palm Bay, and I asked her had she talked with Internal Affairs. The mother stated, no, the sheriff has made a couple of statements on TV that there's an element of self-defense when one unarmed person was shot and killed and the other one was attempted to be killed. I would not want to live anywhere where we don't have no police. Our tax dollars should be spent on raises, promotions for our brave law enforcement officers. I do not want to live in a county where our law enforcement is out of control. This is the people's request. A proposed resolution for Citizen Police Review Board. The mission of the Citizen Police Review Board is to be an independent, citizen-run oversight committee of the Brevard County Sheriff Office, Internal Affairs, and determine whether or not Internal Affairs have properly investigated cases brought to its attention. Additionally, the board fulfills its mission by reviewing policies, procedures, rules, regulations, and general or special orders pertaining to the use of force and police conduct towards all citizens of Brevard County. Be it resolved that this proposed resolution is passed and a workshop is set up to move it forward. Any questions?
Gail Meredith.
When I heard this topic was going to be spoken about tonight, I thought I could speak about it, it's very important. I haven't had any personal problems with police since I've been here. I think that, I live on the island, and I think the police are very good there, but I think that we're all looking at what's happening nationally, and a lot of people in our community are very afraid. Everywhere I go, people speak to me about this, that they're afraid about the business with the immigrants, they're afraid of the police, they're afraid of where we're going as a community. And I think it would be a very good thing to put this in practice. This police review board is a very good idea, and I hope that you will pass it. Do you have any questions of me? Thank you.
Thank you, Gail. Melissa Martin.
I thought it was important to have this discussion, and if we need to talk about it in workshop or other forum, I believe that there is a definite community equity in really thoroughly analyzing the need for this type of process. And for me, I always ask, you know, in, in terms of, you know, when you're creating new things, especially in government, what processes really do? And my opinion regarding these issues is that if you just turn on the news for five minutes, you will see that there is a problem in our country, a visceral problem, a societal issue, where I don't even have to go into this, I think. But if you have, you know, an opposing view on this, I'm happy to bring you all the articles and stats and, you know, issues forward to really show that there are issues here that we all need to reckon with. And as a community, and I think, I think everyone, I believe, and I know everyone, fiercely supports professional law enforcement. There's, I don't, I don't think, I'm not sure if there's anyone out there that, you know, that does not thoroughly appreciate the service and sacrifice they give every single day that they hit the streets. But I do think that as a public servant, and especially those public servants in uniform, we all agree that we should do whatever is necessary for the public's interest. In this case, I believe that just having a Citizens Advisory Board, or not, excuse me, well, Citizens Board, but a police review board as a reasonable and necessary entity to provide that assurance to the public, that there is still public oversight on, on things that are occurring within police departments. So, and this, again, has no disrespect or any suspicion towards Sheriff Ivy. I'm not aware of anything, a case pending. I do have stories told to me regarding various police departments and cases that are troubling, so, and a lot of those are city matters. But in, in the case of the county, I think it would be a great opportunity for the county to stand up in leadership roles of saying, you know what, our, our citizens and their needs, all of our constituents, their welfare is more important than perhaps egos that might, might say that, you know, no one needs to look at us. And I don't think that the sheriff would say that. I think, I would hope he would agree with me that this is in the best interests of the public. So that being said, I do agree in support with a resolution of, that Reverend Dennis brought forward. If, and I honestly believe that there should be more discussion about this in some sort of public forum, and I believe there would be lots of people, you know, sufficiently noticed that would come and let you know exactly what they feel about these issues. So without any questions for me, that's all I had to say. Thank you very much.
Sanjay Patel, Salt Lake Beach. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm here tonight to support the proposal for a Citizen Police Review Board for Brevard County. I recently read a study from the Sarasota Herald Tribune called Bias on the Bench. While I realize our law enforcement officers aren't directly involved in sentencing, it troubled me deeply that in Brevard County, black folks who do the same crime, on average, do vastly more time. When convicted of felony drug possession, for example, black offenders spend over twice the time in jail. According to 2016 data presented in the Sarasota Herald Tribune, their sentences are 114% longer than their white counterparts here in Brevard, over double the time for the very same crime. While this proposed board may not directly address that issue, it seems fair and correct for our community to pay close attention to law enforcement in our community if these are the outcomes. We should do all we can to create a justice system, from policing to public defense to sentencing and detention, that is, in fact, just. One way to foster justice is to ensure our institutions are directly accountable to the citizens we serve. I agree with the movement for Black Lives, which holds that most, that most impacted in our communities should control the laws, institutions, and policies that are meant to serve us, from our schools, to our local budgets, economies, police departments, and our land. This is the very definition of democracy. For this reason, I support the idea of a police review board, to ensure that communities who are most harmed by destructive policing have a say in things like police policies, budgeting, hiring and firing of officers, determining disciplinary action, and have the power to subpoena relevant agency information. Like everyone here, I support our men and women in law enforcement, and the difficult job they do every day policing our community. I'm sure I stand with the vast majority of amazing law enforcement officers who support our community in wanting our justice system to do the very best possible job for the citizens that they serve. For that reason, I hope you will approve the police review board proposed tonight by Reverend Johnny Dennis. Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to 6F2. Mike Walker.
I think you got it wrong.
Oh, I did, that's okay. Mr. Walker, just state your name.
Mike Walker, North Brevard. Thank you for taking your time. This resolution I am against right now, and I'd like to...
Mr. Walker, just state your name.
Mike Walker, North Brevard. Thank you for taking your time. This resolution I am against right now and I'd like to tell you why. Give you my viewpoint on the subject. I'm a retired U.S. Postal employee and like to tell you a little bit about my businesses and myself and my partner, Tom Oliver, involved in. We worked for the U.S. Post Office, which was a good job and served us well. We got our houses, we own our own houses, we got our kids to college. But in Rockledge, there was an original Planet Fitness that was having some problems going along. Nobody in the franchise organization wanted to invest in them and they had accumulated over $350,000 in equipment loans, the debt. They were also losing about $20,000 a month keeping it open. And besides taking over the $350,000 in debt and purchasing the Planet Fitness and investing $20,000 a month to keep it alive, we invested another $250,000 in gym upgrades, including planting trees up in the street. We went to the city of Rockledge and explained to them what we were up against because of the dilapidated shopping center. And they gave us guidance on how to obtain a $10,000 grant for the property. We went to the landlord and we asked the landlord to take the landlord's position to use the $10,000 to get signage for the front of the building. That directed more traffic into our property along with the other businesses that were in the area. They helped us out tremendously. To recap, to recap that, we had $700,000 loans in cash invested into the business that would probably still be open today, that would probably still be empty today. The grant they gave us in the shopping center, it gave us increased exposure and the business income to help us grow and help the other businesses in the plaza. Approximately five years from now, we have 10 employees, not including ourselves, each with an option with a 401K. We give them a safe harbor contribution of 5%. Last year, we gave the state and feds over 174,000 employee payroll taxes, sales taxes, property taxes, and tangible taxes. This doesn't include the employees' portion of payroll tax and our corporate taxes. So, in the five years, we've invested over $870,000 into the federal, state, and city taxes, not including employees' contributions or our personal corporate taxes. The city helped us with the $10,000 to improve an area that we were investing our money into to bring people to the shopping center. While we invest inside the business, the city helped us invest in outside the business to get a good look. So, when people drive by, the area looked nice and presentable to them. As I talked about Planet Fitness for five years, most people didn't even hear about it. So, we invested a lot of money and had taken a risk that, that a lot of people wouldn't go into. Again, working with the city of Rockledge is an unbelievable experience. They really promote growth of a business, but they do have a lot of areas that need this type of look and veneer and facet in front of it to, to help out the city. And because we work so well with, with Rockledge, we decided to open up another franchise. We brought another franchise into town called Skruse Coffee. It's a franchise out of Omaha, Nebraska. And our employees, we have six employees there, they also have 401Ks. We went to the city and we asked them about signage and they donated, well, we got $10,000 through this grant towards our digital signage that helps show our new products that were brought into Florida that haven't been here before. The sign costs us $20,000, but we used $10,000 to, to help us get a really nice digital sign to display it. You might have seen it. Our exposure to the new business was $620,000 investment in cash and loans. The location is sort of out of risk. It's on the north end of Rockledge, if you're familiar with it. There's a lot of open-end, on U.S. One, it's on a lot of open-end shopping centers where there's really poor, dilapidated looking. And it was a bank drive-through that we took. We knocked it down and leveled the land and put it up. That drive-in would still, probably still be up there today.
Mr. Walker, you have a minute?
Yes, sir. Well, I'm done now. What my feelings is that the $10,000 money that is given out to new business startups to help put the front look and presentation into the business really helps out when the person is investing in the business on the inside of the business to get it to grow. I just hope you consider keeping the, keeping the funding for new businesses in the area. Thank you.
Commissioner Riznardi, would you like to introduce this resolution?
Yes. I'm just writing this down because I don't want to miss my comments for that gentleman. This is a resolution and I am under no false idea that this commission will pass it, but I wanted to get it on the record, given what had occurred with Melbourne and occurring more debt. While that would not likely have affected you, sir, because you were a $10,000 grant from your CRA, they probably didn't borrow those monies to give you the grant for the sign. This is to put a temporary moratorium on the CRA itself accumulating more debt because that's where we often get into trouble with these CRAs, having a lifespan of 20, 30, 40 years. And again, this is because our workshop was scheduled so far out into the future, this was to sort of put a halt on things until we can get to workshop. Because assuming that we meet, is a fly in here. Assuming that we meet April the 13th, we have the workshop, Mr. Knox works on some resolutions to bring back to the commission. If we make more tweaks, you know, we could be looking another, to the next month out. We have no meetings in June. This could potentially not even come back for us to make any decisions or changes to anything we want to regarding CRAs until July. So, what this would do is just put a hold. It's just a hold until we can make decisions on where we want to head with some of the CRAs. And again, this isn't, because I am anti-CRA in any sense of, of shape or form. What it does though, is it at least puts a hold on these CRAs going out and accumulating large amounts of debt. Because unfortunately, that is what happens. I mean, we, again, we may have not been able to do a lot with downtown Melbourne, given, you know, the exorbitant amount, amount of money that they just borrowed for the next 20 years for a park, for an apartment. I, I just think that this, this at least protects us because given the, a large amount of time, we could potentially see something come back. This just puts a hold. It just puts a pause on it to say, you know what, we're, we trust you, however, we have to protect ourselves as a county. We have currently roughly, I wrote down a few numbers. I don't want to go off on a tangent because I would be interested to see where the commission's going because I don't want to waste anybody's time either. But they, you know, it's estimated that they'll cost, CRAs will cost the county out of our general fund, you know, the funds that people beg and, and ask for to build our roads and fund our police and fire department, roughly $81 million over the next 10 years. And that's just based on a 2.5% growth. So, that to me, again, is why I think we are addressing the CRA issue because CRAs are designed for improving areas and ridding areas of blight. You know, and it's nice that your CRA helped you with the signage, but I, I tend to think that probably the work that you did within your business probably helped it grow too. I mean, a sign is wonderful and I'm sure it helped the complex, but at the same time, I don't think that that CRA borrowed the money for the $10,000 for your sign. I think that they granted you that $10,000, which is good. I'm glad that they were able to help you, I, I am. But that's not, that's not the issue that I have. I have issue with large amounts, millions of dollars in debt that some of these CRAs borrow money for improvements and we have no say over those monies. And what that does is it commits those future tax dollars from the county for 10, 20, 30 more years until at the very least that debt is paid off, assuming that they don't accumulate more. And that's usually the problem that many of these CRAs run into. So, again, this is why I put this on here, not to stop CRAs, not to shut CRAs down, not to say CRAs are bad or horrible, and not as an anti-CRA measure, but it's, it's to get some financial controls over some of these CRAs to make sure that we are not committing tax dollars against our will here because we, we need all the money we can get to fix the roads.
Was that too long? I'm sorry.
No, I thought it was good. Very good. Anyone else? We do have cards. Courtney Barker.
Thank you again, Chairman. Courtney Barker, City Manager for the City of Satellite Beach. I'm also here representing the League of Cities in place of Mayor Capote. I wanted to clear up some misconceptions and some assumptions that I have also seen in some newsprint too. The, when a CRA takes out debt service, that does not extend the life of the CRA. The, the life of a CRA is given through the statute. And there's only three CRAs in the county that existed prior to the charter. And those, those CRAs you do not have any control over, that would be Titusville, Cocoa Village, and downtown Melbourne. So, when a CRA, for example, when Satellite Beach took out their, their debt service, that was done based on the amount of years that the statute gave the CRA's life. So, that was 25 years. The bank is not going to loan money past 25 years because their, the, the debt service payments is based on the pledge of the TIF revenues. So, no bank is going to give you money that goes beyond what you can afford to pay. So, the, the debt service does not extend the life of a CRA. Only you can do that. Okay?
It can. We could argue that, but I'm, go ahead, I'm sorry.
It really can't.
It absolutely can't.
A CRA would not close down with an exorbitant amount of debt because it couldn't. And it, and the, a city is not going to pick up the expenditure or the debt service on that CRA. That CRA will, will ask to extend its life because of the debt or because they want more improvements. But it usually does end up extending the life of the CRA. We can argue semantics, but we can also argue many other things, but I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt you. I just, I just don't.
I have to just utterly disagree with you. I mean, a bank is going to look at...
That's okay, you can disagree with me.
The, the lifetime, a statute, right now, the statute gives you the timeframe that a CRA is allowed to exist. And you can make it smaller, like you did with Cocoa Beach. You can say 25 years if you would like. And if a bank with Cocoa Beach comes out and says, you know, we want debt service based on our pledged revenues for our CRA, a bank is not going to lend that past 25 years.
And a bank doesn't. I never suggested that. I talked about the life of the CRA. I didn't talk about the extent of the bank note. So, again, I, go ahead, I'll let you speak. I wasn't trying to interrupt, I just, you can disagree, but I'm not incorrect.
Okay. So, regardless, the, in our opinion, debt service cannot be taken out past the, the life of the CRA that was given to the, the CRA by the statute or by the county commission when you delegated the authority. Secondly, the city of Melbourne would not fall under the resolution that you proposed, Chairman. There, there, you would not be able to control them anyway. So, so we have a, a resolution today or tonight before us to apply to a city that is not regulated by this resolution anyway. So, the city of Melbourne went out for debt service for a project they'd been working on for three years. They actually didn't go out to debt service. They pledged they would go out to debt service at the end of the, the construction of the building at the CO, which will be about two years from now. So, we're, we have a resolution in front of us to deal with the, an issue that isn't applicable here. The, the, the part that is unfortunate is that it does affect the city of Cocoa Beach that did want to go out to debt service for a parking garage and that was in partnership with their business community. It's one of the few CRAs, actually the only CRA in the county that was voted in by the voters as a referendum. And here we are saying, no, we're going to, you know, you need to, to not do that right now because we have a conversation. And, and, you know, the city of Cocoa Beach relied on a resolution delegating authority that very specifically says you can go out to debt service. So, here they're working and spending their own time and efforts to, to do their projects based on the authority that you gave them in a resolution, and now we're halting that. And so, I think that we need to, to be cognizant of that. All the cities that I've spoken to, including our city, I mean, we have an interlocal agreement with the county already, but most are not opposed to working with the county. In fact, we want to and we want to, we're, we actually like the idea of having an interlocal agreement. We think that will solve a lot of issues. But, but we can't, you know, it's hard to keep going down a path of cooperation, particularly when you watch the last meeting and you hear some of the language that's coming out about the CRAs and about the cities. And we just want to make sure that we, we all understand that we're all here to work together and it's hard to do that when we have such a negative outlook right now. And I think we need to kind of change that conversation and be a little bit more cooperative. Thanks.
One quick question. And, and I don't know the answer to this, but according to my records, you mentioned that the lifetime of your CRA is 25 years. I have down 30 years. Is, is the, is the stuff I got from the county incorrect and yours is 25 or 30?
The city of Cocoa is, city of Cocoa Beach is 25 years.
No, you mentioned yours was 25 years.
Then that was a mistake. So, ours is, I think, ending in 2026 or something like that.
I, I have 2031 right now, that yours was created in 2001, 30-year life is 2031. Is that correct?
No, no. So, it'd be 2026.
Yeah, that would be the first thing. We'd all have to get on the same page. So, we're all working with the same numbers. Appreciate it.
Behringer Mutt. Matt? Well, that's a, if that's, if that's an A. I'm not saying your pen, your penmanship is bad.
That part is, I'm a teacher, so I apologize for my handwriting. That's for sure. I appreciate that. Number one, thank you, Commission, for just, number one, discussing this issue. You know, my name's Matt Behringer, Titusville, Florida. Again, I have the opportunity to service the Vice Mayor there. I'm coming to you on my own behalf today, not, not so much for the city, although I think that my experience might lend some ideas about to the impact of this. Commissioner Riznardi, I have the most hope and, and opportunity, I think, that over the next few years and being able to work with you for the betterment of all of our community. And I say that with sincerity. In short, there's a couple of things that, that are concerning to me, but most importantly is that, you know, one of the statements, Commissioner Smith, that you made in the last statement, it's almost like it's a bank. And we got money going out and we need to recoup some of that money. And again, I, I come to you with the, with what I said last time. And the ability to work together, I think that's critical in order to help make this happen. We all face the same issues. We may get one of these great night stays up in Titusville for folks about to leave the port or go visit one of those softball games, but you know what, if they ain't got a paved road to get there, it's not going to look good for us. The same thing, as I represent, I, I fully acknowledge that there are folks out in MEMS that have been waiting for a paved road for a long time and I get that. And I think that their concern or when that may happen is as valid as well. But the reason I say that is the one I think principle relative to, it's like a bank, is confidence. When we talk about economic principles, confidence is a real thing. I shared with you at our last council meeting, we were fortunate enough to have a strategic planning. We went through a SWOT analysis for our, for our community. And without exaggeration and being explicit, over 70% of the issues that were raised as a threat were state and county. That's scary. That is a splintered, that is the development of a splintered relationship between a municipality and a county. Again, not to exaggerate, that is the climate we are now creating. And so, Commissioner Tabia, I fully agree, we need a little bit of time to work on this. Still, we all sit down and get our numbers right. And at the end of the day, I think that's what we're looking to do. Now, there's two ways to go about it. We can put the brakes on absolutely everything. And the only thing that I would say with you to that is if you can name four people in our South Street Target area that this decision is going to impact relative to the generational poverty, segregation, and the issues of redevelopment that we're currently working on and building a cornuculus, then folks, I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to pump the brakes on it and work on a moratorium. But at the end of the day, relative to home rule and a municipality, I'm of the belief that the prostitute that I walked up to yesterday, who was servicing a John in a car and stopped them and said, you can't do that here, I need more help than that. I need more help. And so, the CRA is a tool that we can use for economic development, which I think will help end some of the larger scope issues. I would welcome the opportunity to take a ride with any commissioner to the district. Commissioner Pritchett does a great job for us, I think she represents us well. But the impact that this moratorium you have, I don't think you know. And I think that you know it will give you pause to reflect, but does it give the opportunities for the municipalities and the people who will be impacted to pause and reflect with you? Can you truly say that you fully understand the development plans for each city and municipality, where they're at strategically, what part of the process they're on, and how this is going to impact? Can you also say that for the CRAs? Can you say that in relation to the CRAs working with the municipality directly and then working with the county? If you can truly say yes to all of those, then I would say go forth and, I think it would be a horrible decision, but at least in your conscience, I believe that it, you would be justified. But if you can't answer those with a clarity of yes, you know exactly how this is going to fix, how this will impact Taishan, who I taught as a high school student, who, if I, if I catch him on a bad day, he's probably out doing something not good, but if I catch him on a good day, he's working at Winn-Dixie. If you can tell me how... If you can tell me how it's going to impact him, specific to the community, and fix the generational systemic issues we have, as a clear conscience, go ahead. But until then, I would just ask that, with respect, we're only talking about until summertime. And on a three-month or four-month wait, or four months to allow us to continue to work on those efforts that we put a lot of years in, some of our studies with clarity, with distinction, above the board, then all I would ask for you is to allow us to continue for those few months while you have the time to reflect and discover specifically with the municipalities and the CRAs that we're talking about, and most importantly, the people that they would impact. So thank you all very much.
Mayor Carol McCormick.
It's been a long day already.
I was in high school when we started this meeting.
I know it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'm Carol McCormick. I'm the mayor of Palm Shores, and I'm also the current president of the Florida League of Mayors, which represents 412 cities. For the new commissioners, you have not had an opportunity to see our dog and pony show that we have done many, many, many times over the past few years. We were surprised to see this come up tonight because at our last meeting, I thought we agreed that we would wait until the workshop, that we could all, you know, sit down and go over these issues. I don't think you can paint every CRA with a broad brush. You particularly cannot paint Palm Shores with that brush because we do not have ad valorem tax. You do get our ad valorem tax. And I've provided each and every one of you with a in-depth packet of information regarding our CRA. Ours was for 25 years. Our first check was $33,000. I believe that the chairman has had an opportunity to see the positive impact that the CRA has had on our town because we had a lot of blight and we've had crime. Now, we did a facade improvement grant like the other gentleman, but ours was a matching grant. The small business had to match the amount of money. And we're also, excuse me, we're also continuing to do that program for facade improvements, but they have to invest in the program. So it's not just the money going out. As far as the town of Palm Shores, we don't spend money that we don't have. We never have. So, you know, we're working very hard, and it's a win-win for the Brevard County. The more successful the town of Palm Shores is, the more money you get. We're not, we're not depleting your general fund by any stretch of the imagination. In fact, the more successful and the more businesses that go in that are outside of that small corridor that was blighted, you're making money off of Wawa. You're going to make money off of 15,000-square-foot building that's going in on Panida and Wickham. None of that money comes to us. So you can't look at everybody and say, "You're in debt." But we do need to be able to operate and continue to do the projects that we have. So we're just asking you to, you know, I understand that where you're coming from, but that's not, you can't look at all of us and say, "We're going to stop everything because of what one area did." I think that's unfair to the rest of us. And like I said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. I have hand-delivered packets to each and every one of you explaining our CRA and how we are different. But we do need to be able to continue to operate with our programs, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I don't know much about your city's budget. Can you, are you allowed to raise taxes?
No, I don't have any taxes. I have no ad valorem taxes.
Zero.
Zero. You get them all.
I'm with you. I'm with you. Here's my question. Maybe you can help me out because I thought that was the answer, so you come in with an objective opinion. As the CRAs grow in size, we heard that they're going to get larger and larger, and, sorry, the funds that are going to come out of general fund are going to get larger and larger and larger. We, like you, you get nothing. We're working on a cap, so we can't increase it.
But you're getting the money from the improvements that we make because our town is improved. That's what brought in the Wawa Corporation. That's what brought in a 15,000. We don't get that money.
We cannot. We have, we're working in a cap. So our revenue is not increasing, yet a larger portion...
Well, neither is mine.
That's why, that's why I, that's why I'm asking your...
I'm only getting the TIF money from the original, and you've been, I've given you a map of the original area when we did our blight study. So we don't get the subdivisions. All of us pay the property taxes to you guys, not to us. The town has no property taxes. We have no ad valorem fees. So the money that we get from you gives us the opportunity to do those improvements and tear down a blighted building that became 62 new homes.
I'm with you, Mayor, but here's my question. You brought it up, and you were 100% correct. In 2004, you got $33,000. 2016, you've got more than three times that amount, $113,000.
Yeah, because...
So it's grown quite a bit.
It's growing, but you've got more money.
But we're working under a cap, so we're, we cannot spend this money. We have a general fund that you're taking a larger...
I understand what a general fund is.
...portion of it, and we have less to spend. So I'm asking...
But you get, the more successful we are in the town by new buildings and new businesses, the more money you get because it doesn't come to us. They're not all in the CRA. The Wawa's not in the CRA. You get all of that money, but they came to the town of Palm Shores. I don't know why, I understand what you're saying.
We're working within a cap, so I don't think you understand the mill...
Yeah, I understand. But I understand also that all of the money that comes into the town of Palm Shores for ad valorem fees goes to Brevard County, except that small portion of TIF money in that one small zone. And we wouldn't, you wouldn't be getting all that extra money if we had not been able to do and tear down, which you didn't even know, the mobile home park with the prostitution and the crack that's now $7 million building. So...
I'm glad I didn't know about it.
No. But that's the thing that I think that is so frustrating for me is because we don't have ad valorem taxes. That money's not coming to us. It is going to you. And I would like to take this opportunity to personally thank Stockton Whitten for all that he has done for this county during his tenure. He has been an outstanding manager, and I just want to publicly thank him for everything that he's done.
Mr. Barfield, do you have a question for Mayor McCormick?
No, I just want this discussion up here.
Thank you, Mayor.
You understand.
Thank you, Mayor.
I know you do.
I have a question. Mayor, if you don't mind.
No, not at all.
Can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
What is, because I don't have that number in front of me because I look at usually them as a collective and one or two if there's issues, but what is your, do you know approximately how much debt your CRA has today?
I don't have any debt. I don't spend money that we don't have.
Right, so...
Now, we have, we have projects that we have, like I said, we're doing facade improvement grants, but we don't, the person say, "I've sent you..."
But are you, are you, is your CRA going to borrow money or bond money?
No.
Then you don't have anything to worry about with this resolution.
I can't bond money because I don't have ad valorem fees.
But that's the point. That's the point. This resolution probably wouldn't apply to you.
It probably wouldn't, but I have been requested as the Florida League of Mayors to come and address this issue because we feel like we're constantly under attack with the CRAs.
You're not, I promise. And I, I know I said it a couple of times, and I, and I think that, you know, some are hearing it and some aren't.
Right.
I'm not anti-CRA. I'm not. It frustrated me when I was a member of the Palm Bay City Council that we didn't do much with ours for 20 years, and it used to make me crazy, but our board and just dynamics of the...
We think we're a poster child for what works.
Right, exactly.
And we don't have debt because, like I said, we don't spend it if we have and don't have it.
Exactly. And I do appreciate your comments, but again, this resolution wouldn't apply to you.
It doesn't apply to me.
And I appreciate what you do for Palm Shores.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Ask her a question real quick.
Sure. Mr. Barfield has the floor, but you don't have a question for her?
I just want to clear something real quick.
Okay.
Just Commissioner Tabia was talking about, you know, the cap. I don't, it doesn't include new construction. So new construction going in, is that correct, Mr. Knox? Okay, so that's outside the cap. So anyway.
Mayor, your CRA is going to be around to 2029. So you're going to continue to receive funds with your agreement with the county up until that time, correct?
Ours was 25 years.
Right, I think we made our little table up.
Right.
So regardless of whether you go and bond out funds or not, we're still going to be paying you those funds to 2029.
Right, and we're still going to be working hard to bring new businesses in that you'll get the tax money from.
So if you, like, did get a big project, because I know some people are working on this, and you went out and bonded some funds up ahead, it wouldn't go past 20...
We would not bond.
But if you did, it wouldn't go past 2029, be the same amount of funds coming in.
We can't bond. We don't have ad valorem. We cannot bond.
With the guarantee of funds coming into the county?
No.
No, with a $100,000 guarantee of...
We cannot bond, and we would not bond. We never have. I'm in my 15th year as mayor. We would not bond, and we will not borrow. We will only do what we can afford to do.
Right.
Because there's no collateral of funds coming in.
Pardon me?
But if you were, if you had a guarantee of these funds coming in, though, like other CRAs have done that, they've gone and maybe just took out a bond loan for a amount of time, knowing that these funds were coming in over a period of time to pay them. The point I make, though, because you're representing other cities, is it's still the same amount of funds the county is going to pay to the CRA regardless?
Oh, I understand, and there, I think there are 100 and, there's 187, 187? That may not be the correct number. No, there's 178 CRAs in Florida. There's also a House bill, House Bill 13, that has been submitted in the House that's going to do a lot of the things that you guys are looking at doing as far as auditing and reporting, accountability, transparency, additional requirements. It doesn't have a Senate sponsor yet, but this bill, and we do support this as the League of Cities, and I think this bill will do a lot of the things that you guys are interested in.
Thank you. Can I get that one more time on the record?
Yes.
You do support House Bill 13?
We support.
I would like, again, I...
The Florida League of Cities supports legislation to improve municipalities' use of community redevelopment agencies to effectively carry out...
I'm good, I'm good.
...redevelopment and community revitalization in accordance with home rule. I just was given this this afternoon.
Well, I couldn't agree with you more. I support House Bill 13, but it also doesn't...
I'm sorry, we are opposing the bill.
Kind of a big difference.
I know.
Whoopsie.
But it doesn't have a Senate companion, and we hope we can kill that bill in session. And we'll be over there a week after next. But I hope I've answered your question. We don't borrow money.
You don't, I got you.
We do not borrow money. But we do have a major project coming up, and it's a road project. And we are going to have to use the money that we're counting on through our CRA to be able to do this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here on behalf of the city of Cocoa Beach, and thank you, Commissioner Snart, for taking my call and answering my call. We serve at the pleasure of our residents. So just a few distinctions. This is a very complex issue. I have given you some white papers with some economic data. My day job is banker, so I will tell you emphatically, there is not a bank in the world that will lend you money beyond the lifespan of your term of your CRA. It's just not going to happen, first off. Secondly, just give you a little timeframe here. In January 2008, the Cocoa Beach voters approved a referendum to establish a CRA. In May of 20, May 29, 2008, the Brevard County Commission approves Resolution Number 8-128, delegating authority to the city of Cocoa Beach to establish a CRA. Included in that resolution was the ability to borrow money under Section 1 U, defined a 25-year term from date of creation of CRA, Section 3 C. So our CRA effectively terminates May 29, 2033. We have no problem with a maturity date. It's a hard date. If you can't get something done in 25 years, you ought to hang it up. July 2009, the city of Cocoa Beach prepares a finding of necessity report defined by Florida statutes 163-355. It's a requirement for a creation of a CRA. In it, it identified more than six instances of blight. If you don't think we have blight in our town, I'm happy to show, personally invite you and show you some of our less-than-desirable areas of Cocoa Beach. November 19, 2009, the city of Cocoa Beach passes Resolution 200928, establishing the Downtown Community Redevelopment Agency and establishing an approximate .37 square-mile downtown redevelopment area. That is the extent of our CRA. It's basically about a couple of, you know, 12 blocks. CRA takes time to achieve their revenue. It doesn't happen overnight. Those areas are blighted for a reason. They took decades to get to that case. We have a poorly laid-out city that was built out of the space age without a master plan. We have basically 100% depreciated 50, 60-year-old buildings that lack adequate parking for their end users and the desired end users. We have users that wish to have retail and restaurant conversion from office warehouse that if we were to apply parking metrics that are normally required for every seat, they have to have two parking spaces. A .17-acre building that encompasses the entire footprint of their property isn't going to ever achieve that. You can't create parking that doesn't exist. We have been working on a parking plan for 2000, since 2008. We engaged an architect to give us a plan to come up with that. Our CRA tax base from 2014 to 16 increased $30 million. I also gave you empirical data the last time, and I have numbers again. Outside the CRA, our taxable values have gone up $200 million. That's the benefit to you guys. We have people that are interested in coming to our downtown. They want to visit. They want to come. They want to spend money. They want to build things and be able to drive or walk their bike .37 miles away and come. That's investments that we're all going to benefit from. We did discuss building a parking garage. The only way we're going to be able to build it is to borrow money. As a banker, leverage is a tool that we use to help small business. If you take away a small business's ability to borrow money, you will never allow them to grow, and that's what we're asking you to do. We're happy to sit down with you in good faith and go over all these things in April, but you can't paint us with a broad brush. We really hope you will not consider this and wait till we have a chance to have an earnest discussion in April. Thank you very much for your time.
Another Mike Miller. I'm Mike Miller, Commissioner in the city of Cocoa Beach. I'll be very brief. I would encourage you all to take up the CRA issues collectively at the workshop that you yourself scheduled rather than do it in a piecemeal fashion. Please go and enjoy a beer with the time that I'm returning to you with this message.
Thank you. It's the best thing I've heard all night.
Charles Tovey, 2555 Roberts Road, Melbourne. I noticed nobody else has to say their addresses and things, and yay, now it all comes to light of why they attacked me. And let's see, 2005 is when I started getting it from Palm Shores, and it wasn't the CRA that built up Palm Shores. It's because they dried it up. They cemented in the springs, and they filled it all in, and there's no more wetlands and no more springs. And it's all rose, and it's ruined now. And why wasn't I eligible for CRA? I bought my house because it was blighted across the street from the murdering crack child, all kinds of things, and I never had a problem. But when they put that $7 million building across the street, and all the other surrounding neighbors got their CRA benefits and economic development, they all profited. And yay, they're doing great, but what did I get? Try and burn down my house, and shoot at me, and beat on me, and threaten me with all kinds of arrests, and this is the CRA. My property is across, our property, rather. It's our property, and why? 2005, soon as Mayor and her, yay, they wanted to overtake my property. And nobody wants to do anything about it, and we're just going to forget the whole thing and just see. Why I came up here is because I have another flag I found flying down the US road highway that could endanger somebody's life. Yeah, not, how about school bus going over? Yeah. From the flags advertising their city, welcome to Palm Shores, the little town that cares, cares about them, but they want to drive me off my property, just like the Indians did for the CRA money that everybody's getting to build up and use their lives while they all attacked me. Economic Development Council, all these people that got it, and they're threatening my lives. Every day of my life, I have to deal with my dictators that have received these benefits. And now that we have public record from the economic development beneficiaries, it's all come to light now. It's all come to light, ever since they've been coming up here and all their little associates, and now tonight it's, why did I go through all this stuff? Because City of Palm Shores is a little town way up by Post Road, and in 2005, they got the CRA, and all these people cooperated and conspired to build these big entities to increase the tax at my expense, the expense of the Constitution, my right to live, lifetime for CRA so they can make it. And you don't, I can, make me a mayor of a city. Do I have to run for a mayor to not use CRA money? Is this what our government has come up to, to where we have to beg money to make something? Then what kind of, what kind of people are these people running our towns? If they can't make anything out of their little city or do, they shouldn't be elected if they have to depend on it, just like the churches depending on other people's monies? The capability of people, not the what we can borrow and be given. I don't appreciate it, and it's not going away, and I'll be up here until you murder me. And they've already tried, cut my brake lines, my steering wheel, tried to burn me out of my house, run me over so many times, threatened to shoot me, did shoot at me. Yay, I know, I got to go, and excuse me for getting off the track, but this CRA thing, and it's all about, yay, running me off my property. And nobody knows nothing, nobody saw nothing, nobody did nothing, and I'm in control of my physical self, and I mean nobody harm. I wish nobody harm, and I wish nobody ever has to go through any kind of a problem because they want to get CRA money or economic development money. I have the, I have it. I have all the records, I have all the evidence, I have my witnesses, and I, no matter what they say, it's ruined, Palm Shores.
Okay, that's the last of our cards. Pleasure, the board.
I don't know that it passes, and it probably won't, but I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Here we have a motion to approve the resolution modifying delegation of community redevelopment agency powers by Commissioner Zinnardi, and we have a second by Commissioner Tobias. Discussion. I have some things I would like to say and ask. Mr. Witten, when do we have this workshop scheduled?
That's an April 13 workshop.
So how long is that? Four weeks?
Approximately four weeks, yes.
Most CRAs came into business, came into being when we were flush with cash. And I think everybody and the CRA, people that have CRAs, they understand we're not flush with cash anymore. And everybody understands, I mean, everybody understands that we have a roads problem. So, and as Mr. Tobias mentioned, we have a cap. We're the only county in the entire state that has a cap. And the cap is based on the CPI, Consumer Price Index, which this past year increased a whole 0.12%. So we're running this county with 1/10 of a percent of an increase. So it's very, very difficult for us to get where we need to be, particularly when, just using some simple items to visualize. An ambulance costs almost twice what it did six years ago when we bought it. A bus costs almost twice as much as it did eight years ago when we bought it. And yet, we have to run a county and buy these things and pay these upgrades with 1/10 of a percent. So it's difficult. So that's the background, and I think everybody gets it. I've talked to a number of people from the cities over the last couple, three months. Recently, I spoke to the city managers of Satellite Beach and Cocoa Beach. I understand Cocoa Beach's plight. They've been working on their deal for two years. They desperately want to build a parking garage. But I said to them, can it not wait another three or four weeks for us to have this workshop? I want this workshop. I think most people want the workshop, because if we can have a workshop, we can talk to each other instead of talking at each other and talking past each other, and maybe we can put this to rest. I'm very hopeful that we can, because I've been on this board for two and a half years. And it's like every other week, we have subject matter, CRAs, CRAs, CRAs. I know everybody's getting tired of it on both sides of the fence. So I'm hopeful that this workshop, we can get all this out, and we can put it to rest, CRAs can go about their business, we'll give a measure of control to the county, we'll understand better what they're doing. I have a question for Mr. Knox. Does indebtedness extend the length of time for CRA?
Indebtedness extends the time that the county has to pay the tax increment. So if the, if we created a CRA that didn't fully, didn't have debt right today, for example, and a loan was made, be it by a bank, be it by the city that created the CRA, whatever the case may be, it will extend the county's obligation to pay that into that trust fund to cover that debt for the period of that loan. Now, most banks won't lend you beyond the 25 years that you've delegated to them, but the way the statute reads, it can go up to 30 years, which is the extent to which you would be required to pay the increment. So the fact of the matter is, your increment's going to stay, going to keep going into the county, into city coffers, or into CRA coffers, as long as they have debt.
But it can't extend past the 30 years?
It can't go beyond 30 years, right.
So let me ask you this hypothetical. If, if a city with a CRA has an end date, say, let's just say June 1 of this year, and they take it, take on more debt that would extend out 20 years, their CRA doesn't have to go away, does it? I mean, our obligation to fund that CRA ends June 1 this year, but they could still continue to pay off that debt on their own, could they not?
Well, I think, no, I don't think the answer to that's real clear. I think the problem you have is the statute says one thing, and what it says is that if the CRA that goes away a year from now encourages a debt that lasts 30 years, you're required to pay into that CRA for 30 years. That's what the statute says.
My head wants to explode. So this is why I think it's important for all of us to sit down as adults, talk this thing through, see if we can come to some agreement that we can live with. I've already asked the different cities here. Mr. Tobias repeated what I said last time. I was impressed that I said that. It sounded pretty eloquent. I'm surprised it came from me.
But they clean it up up there.
Oh, okay. But I don't, I honestly don't think the moratorium's necessary. I think that we do have a measure of trust with the cities. City of Cocoa Beach has accepted the fact that we're asking them to sit down, and they're willing to wait the four weeks until the, until we have the workshop. And City of Melbourne, we have no effect on one way or the other, but to their credit, they apologized to me because they didn't know that I had made that statement, because we did not send out any kind of a notice to the CRAs. And contrary to what some of us might believe up here, people in this county don't hang on every word that we say. So anyway, we have a motion before us. Do we have any other comments? Mr. Tobias, your light's on.
Thank you. And I think, well, it's closer to five weeks, and as we learn with the ethics stuff, we ask the staff to put together an ordinance. So that could, you know, I haven't seen the new ordinances for the ethics stuff, and I'm not putting any rush on it or anything. I understand it's a time-consuming process. So, you know, that very well could be a month on top of that. So really, it's not four weeks. We're looking at, you know, I'm asking, do you trust the CRAs for, for what amounts to probably two and a half are the reality until we could get a resolution and vote on it? We're looking at close to three months. And if, you know, you feel comfortable with that, you know, that's one thing. But I think we need to honestly look, if we were to take action, and I don't know that we will take action, but the absolute soonest that we could do it, it would be at least two months. It would be much longer than, you know, the four weeks that was, that was just mentioned. I mean, we're, we're more than five weeks out from today. So, you know, there's that as a, there's certainly that as an issue.
Commissioner Zinnardi.
And that was something that I brought up. And just for the record, this is the only CRA item that I've ever brought to commission. So I know that, you know, you'd mentioned that people are getting tired of coming in and tired of hearing it. Well, I'm getting tired of listening to residents asking why we're committing so much of our general fund to CRAs. So we are answerable to not just the city's leaders, and we are good partners, but we are also answerable to everybody that lives here that drives on our road system, that complains of their drainage and the roads that have never been done or are in dire need of getting done. So again, this was just a pause, and if it's not the will of the commission, that's okay. We can, you know, go back and forth and talk about this for another half an hour, an hour, but honestly, this is just to put a pause on things. And I, it sort of surprises me that so many people are against that, because it's, it doesn't, it's no threat to anybody's existence, other than you can't borrow large sums of money between now and when we're supposed to be hurried and getting this workshop done. But that's okay, again, and I, and I, and I would, I would argue that Cocoa Beach is in the middle of their agreement, so they would be probably, or the commission could agree that they are either exempt, or they already have the interlocal agreement according to Mayor Malik. So I don't know that they, they would be affected by that, but they're the only one I heard from, and this has been on the agenda since day one.
Mike, could you come up here, please? We need to pick your brain. Jim, I mean Jim, I'm sorry.
I'm Jim McKnight, City Manager of Cocoa Beach. We do not have an interlocal. We only have a resolution, just like everybody else.
Maybe the mayor misunderstood, because he said that he did, but-
Yes, we, we don't. It's just a resolution. We've done the research to make sure, so.
But if you're in the middle of a deal, I don't, I think it far easier for us to take a quick peek at it and say okay than it would be for us just to say, well, it's, again, I-
Commissioner Smith called me last Friday, and I told him we were, we were ready to pull the trigger, but going through a workshop and seeing what we can work out, because there's some things that, I've had CRAs in three locations, this is my third place, okay? Cocoa, Created, Rockledges, and now I'm Cocoa Beach. I see some things that can be worked that hopefully will be for the benefit of both the county and the city. And so I promised him that we would not pull any triggers prior to the workshop, and we won't. We're, we're not there. Six months is problematic, because we've been following our plan, and our plan with what we're trying to do has a direct effect on the blighted conditions in our business community that are improving every day.
And honestly, the six months was arbitrary, or at least a number that, because again, we were looking at when we'd have something back here to vote on. So that's an indication probably that we won't have anything back here for us to vote on for six months.
You got our attention when you put six months in there. That really concerned us.
That was sort of staff-driven, only because we were looking at what was coming back.
Sure, understood.
How long it would take us to get to workshop.
Yes, and I understand, and I know it makes it difficult when you have communities that, you know, no deference to Palm Shores, but they have no taxes, so they're not really having any skin in the game, okay? We have skin in the game. We're putting in more than you are into it. So I understand the, the need to make sure that it's being appropriately spent. We're all on, on board with that. And I actually look forward to the workshop, because I think there are probably some misconceptions on both sides of the issue. And we have talked about this and talked about this. I agree with you, Commissioner Smith, and it's time we actually sat down face-to-face and talked about what the real issues are. And I understand roads are a big priority. In Cocoa Beach, we don't have any county roads, so we're lucky, I guess, but, you know-
And I just, and I, and me personally, I just want to find that balance, you know?
Can't agree more with you, ma'am. Thank you. Any other? Thank you.
Jim.
Well, I, oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Pritchett, you have the floor.
I just wanted to bring up how this conversation kind of started. A while ago, the resolution came forward to get rid of the resolution that we had on board, that we don't talk about CRAs without a majority vote up here on the commission because of what you guys endured past. And before we even talked about that, we had started studying out CRAs, because we're getting near budget time, trying to creatively find ways to make money. So I, I mean, it's, it's been something we're all thinking about. But again, you know, that night that we brought it up, we discussed making a workshop, just so we don't have the cities keep coming out continuing. We're doing it to them every week. And I, I think, you know, we put it on an appropriate amount of time, because when we called beforehand, they said they were working on their March, you know, presentations, and they thought by April they would be able to come along and give us some really good information. So again, I, you know, whether we do or we don't, whatever, I'm waiting for workshop to honor them in coming with their information. It gives us time to take the time and really study these things out. I watched the Melbourne CRA on TV. I stayed up Saturday night to 1:30 watching it. So I, you know what, I just, I guess we're all doing that, taking our time studying these items out and coming in and waiting for y'all's presentations, and I'm looking forward to seeing. I know there's some things we got to tweak, but, you know, I haven't hit it from the beginning. I'm in favor of CRAs. I've seen the good things that they've done, the way that it's benefited communities. And most of these places, if you haven't had the projects coming in, there'd be zero tax revenues to be paying out anyways. So I think you're going to have to show us that balance. I'm looking forward to you guys coming and selling your product. And again, I'm, I'm not going to vote in favor of this, just because I just really believe in my heart, setting forth with that workshop was the appropriate thing to do, just so people aren't having to leave work and come down here and, and as we work through this. But it's been a great education along the way anyway, so thank you for coming out.
I'm not going to vote for it either. The moratorium is something that I support, and I've got the city's word for it, that they're going to abide by that moratorium until the workshop. If, if after we have the workshop, you feel that it's necessary, that we need to go forward with the moratorium, I'll consider voting for it then. So with that said, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zinnardi, and we have a second by Commissioner Tobias. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
It fails three to two. How do you want that? You got it? Okay. Okay, moving right along. Thank you, folks, for all being here. Okay, we have appointments regarding Animal Control Council.
Mr. Chair, this is just a request of the Sheriff's Office to appoint the alternates per Section 14-49B of the Code of Ordinances.
I make a motion, we accept these appointments.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Barfield, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass is 5-0. We have no cards for public comments. Board reports. Mr. Witten.
No report, sir.
Mr. Knox.
No report, Mr. Jim.
Mr. Barfield.
No report.
Mr. Tobias.
No report.
Ms. Zinnardi.
No report.
Ms. Pritchett.
No report.
Kurt Smith, no report. This meeting is adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period. any such period.